Yeah, that's exactly.
Insincere.
Insincere.
That's right, yeah. Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show today is December the 5th, 2019. The time is 9:00 a.m. I wonder if Counselor Smith would lead us in Pledge of Allegiance today? I'm kind of going that direction.
I see. You're next.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's the very best we've ever done. Where'd you say that cup is?
I was just thinking that.
Oh, it's in the box. Yeah, it's in the box. It's not empty like Delirious Hand is.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. All right. Anybody has not, would remind you to silence your phones as I ask the county clerk to... Sorry, clerk to the board.
Did you do?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Yes.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board Kelly Camper.
And thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Audience introductions.
Who are you?
Jackie Bubas for the Sentinel.
Thank you all. Amendments to the agenda.
Gosh, I'm just...
We can amend the introduction.
Yeah, we could amend the introduction, but...
I don't have anything.
Nor do I. Yes, sir?
We have one thing on here twice, the consideration.
You're right, yeah.
And I would suggest we take off that second one. That's the one I had care of, on consideration of temporary agreement with CRCA3.
Okay, so the next, the last item of business, I would move that we amend the agenda by striking consideration of temporary agreement with free con. It's been seconded. Discussion, I believe that's debatable, is a discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Delete that bad boy. Actually, I should strike through it, but, um... Any other amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on. Approval of the minutes, we do not have any commissioner items. Commissioner Prince, would you like to begin?
Since last meeting, the only thing I really did was attend the Colorado County Incorporated Convention in Colorado Springs, of course, with both of you and sort of 100 of my federal commissioners and administrators and stuff like that. That's basically all I did, and I thought this conference was good. I learned a tremendous amount in many areas. One that I really thought was terrific was governmental immunity, sovereign immunity. It was actually for the road crew, but I went to it because I was curious to see what they were saying. And it's a very complicated area in terms of motor vehicle, what's a motor vehicle, is a road greater motor vehicle, that kind of thing.
Right.
It was excellent. I think at some point we need to discuss short-term rentals, if we feel that it's something that should come onto the radar of the commission or not. But that was a big item, and I know, I believe, all three of us attended that. Your governor was there. I'll stop right there. That was as far as I thought.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
As far as we went.
Commissioner Candace.
Yeah, it seems like a year ago, doesn't it? We had the last meeting. It's only been a week.
Been some water under the bridge.
Big deal, though, that I did finalize was a meeting with Sally Clark, USDA, here on Thursday at, at, here, in this room.
10:30.
10:30 on Thursday, and it's for her to discuss two things she wants to do. One is answer any questions we have on her program for the fiber program we're doing in partnership with the town of West Cliff and Silver Cliff, the IGA we've just signed. And we also want to have her, you know, leave any concerns that the community might have on what that means and what her program is and what it covers. The other thing she's got, she's got a lot of programs, infrastructure programs that USDA, and she presented that to us in the meetings up there yesterday, this last week, on other things that are available from communities, and there are some good stuff there that I thought something very useful. I think you missed part of that, Jay, because she did that in the county district thing. Were you in the, in that luncheon?
Mountain District meeting.
Mountain District meeting. She came in and did a personal thing in there, and I think we're going to see some of that same thing. We're going to have to get a phone set up because she's bringing her operations director, who actually works the broadband for her. He's in Phoenix or in some other city, and he's going to be dialed in to answer questions for us on the program itself and how to execute it.
What, Thursday?
12th, 12th December.
And what time again?
10:30 here, in this room. We're going to go after that to have, we're ready to make a decision with the group, but either we'll get Subway sandwiches in here, if you want to keep talking, or we can go eat with her at Tony's or something. And then I've had several comments from people thinking it might not be a bad thing to, and not necessarily now, but we could bring her back and have a community-wide sponsored, we'll sponsor it, have a Q and A for the program itself, give them a status of where we are on application, and have her answer, do some more interaction with us to help personalize it. She's excited about it from a standpoint that we are a low-population county that qualifies us for more, it's, there's rural, urban, and city, basically, big cities. And this program that they're pushing is really aimed at counties our size, and we really qualify. We're kind of unique because we're, we're, we're close to the bigger cities, yet we're rural. So we can interact with her on Thursday. And then we did sit in, I liked the, there were some pretty good topics that we covered, and as a result, Tom and I have decided to form a partnership, and we're going to build a hemp farm. We're going to go squeeze some juice. Actually, we found out in that thing, it isn't all what it's cracked up to be, is kind of the message I got out of it. It's costly, it looked like it was a fat, now we're talking hemp. And, and the risk to the reward is pretty high because you can screw up and get too hot a crop and be in trouble. And, and yet they don't have the policies nor the processes, because if you got it hot, why can't you reprocess it, was the issue they were having, and how do you do that to make it cheap enough to handle and to get more mechanized there? So, so there's a lot, a lot more hemp farms than I realized, even in this valley. They've got 10 registered growers up here for hemp, maybe two or three people, but instead of 10 people, but they've got registered in this county.
Parcels of what?
Parcels of land that are registered. And, and that's the low end. There's, there are a lot of counties with six, there's not a county that had zero. There's six to 20, and then I think above that was another category of people, and there's as many as 60 to 100 in some counties, like Pueblo and others. So that was interesting. And then the other one that I thought was really good, and Tom and I both attended it, was a session with the road and bridge boys on a program they're setting up for an associate's degree in road and bridge maintenance, basically, doing the job. And it enables a guy to get an associate's degree with college credits for the time that they've spent doing things, as well as other credits they can gain, and then tend to it online and do other things. A really neat thing that we could offer to our people on the, on the road and bridge areas. Looked good to me. And Tom brought up a pretty good thing. It's, we, on the meeting following, was guys looking at ways to maintain roads and the things that are available that we can use to, as tools and things, to help us make decisions on how to handle the roads better. And it's a sad thing that we thought, Tom brought it up in spades and made a big hit, was why don't we get it to all the commissioners so they can take advantage of what this is rather than having it presented to the team that comes and gets turned down by a city administrator or somebody else and doesn't get the impacts? Let's get it firsthand to everybody. So I thought that, both those issues were great. And then we did see the governor. Over to you.
Okay, yeah, not a lot to report either. Obviously, Thanksgiving holiday was between our last meeting now and in the next three days at Colorado Springs. I thought it was a good conference, I'm glad I went. I thought, certainly felt like it was worth the money that we spent to go. I was a little disappointed about a couple of things and communicated that with Eric Bergman, director of TCI. As Commissioner Prince indicated, we sat in a session that happened to be pertaining to the short-term rentals in Salon B and in Salon A they were having, as I found out, another session, that was a regular organized session.
For sure. The band?
Between, it was a collaborative effort between teen suicide and another topic. And why they had this band in there, I have no idea, but I just told him, I said, it was disrespectful to the speakers.
They had a band?
Discourteous to the...
I didn't hear that. I wasn't at that.
To the people, the audience commissioners that sat in on that session, and he said, yeah, Jeannie Pagino was very concerned about how that was going to work. And so I said, you know, I was very discouraged about that and the lack of seating for the Monday sessions. And he said, yeah, we really, we got caught unaware, we didn't realize so many commissioners had an interest to come on Monday and go to those sessions. And I said, well, we made a point for all three of us to come and attend some of those because we thought it was important anyway. And I said, I just didn't appreciate having to sit on the floor during two of the three sessions on Monday. And he said, yeah, please, please, please send us an email with those. He said, we are very aware of those, you're not the only one, but he said, we need, we need follow-up with emails so we make sure we get that to the proper committee when they meet through the rest of the winter. But I thought it was a good, good conference. You know, elegante hotel, elegante gets a bad rap, I think. I mean, I thought their food was excellent, plenty of it.
They remodulate it.
Their accommodations are fine, and so, yeah, I mean, I just, I had a little trouble getting on the internet Monday night, or Tuesday night after our sessions, but, you know, that's what it is. So I really felt like the short-term rental session was the most informative, well-organized, they had great handouts, three excellent speakers. And talked to all three of them afterwards and just thought they did a great job, and asked one if we were to ever invite him down to give his perspectives on what they're doing in Laramie County, which is Fort Collins, of course, and Estes Park. And he said, yeah, he would certainly be willing to come down and meet with us. So, you know, their, their big piece of advice was to get started early on, process if you think that's something you wanted to deal with, so.
A couple of other guys volunteered to come down here, too. The engineer from, they're on the asphalt.
Yeah, right.
I spoke to ladies from accounting, they just put theirs in, and they have that really interesting one, that's where they had that parameter where all the neighbors had to know. And she was very amenable to coming down and talking to us or helping us if that's something we chose to do. And I'm not going there, I'm just saying, you know, we need to decide whether somebody is going to take on or not.
Right. Yeah, I think it's going to be a little hot potato, we have to decide if we have the stomach to take it on and deal with it and try to get some stuff in place, or if we don't. I think that's what it boils down to. So I think we're going to see the impacts in our county of short-term rentals. I think we've already seen that to some degree. I don't think we'll ever be subjected to the kind of impacts that they're seeing on the front range and on the I-70 corridor, but nonetheless, I think we're going to see some impacts from it.
So we can get some examples?
Yeah, and I brought the three, there's only three counties that have formal...
Yeah, policies.
Policies in place, as I understood it, but there might be some others and they just either weren't aware of or whatever.
Many towns have it, because I researched this for West Cliff. So there are, what you saw from the counties, similar ordinances are in a bunch of towns. I mean, there's a lot of references if we choose to pursue it.
So, yeah, I just, I'm glad we went. I felt like we really, it was important for all three of us to be there. I felt like other people appreciated the fact that Custer County was there in full force and had a couple of people mention that, that they...
They did the way.
...was being that, yeah. So the other thing I want to bring up under commissioner items is the inaccurate, misleading coverage that has been portrayed on our behalf in the newspaper, certainly not talking about the Sentinel. Very disappointed in Ms. Jackson's inaccurate reporting of our BOCC meeting. I've had several people ask me what in the world is going on, and I said, look, and I hate to say this, but it has come down to this, I have told three people, as a county commissioner in this county, you cannot believe everything you read in that newspaper. Very irritated about Ms. Jackson's front-page article, I think it was inaccurate and very misleading. I know it's inaccurate, there are statements in here that are absolutely untrue. I was hoping she would be here this morning, I'm not surprised that she's not, because I know that one, Mr. Hedberg, has already had his ears toasted over this particular article on the front page of the November 27th or 28th, 28th. Just ridiculous about that reporting, so I'm over it. They've certainly, this paper has not done one thing positive to help us as commissioners have a positive collaborative relationship with the clinic. I'm just trying to choose my words carefully and bite my tongue, yes, sir.
If I could just tag on to the back of that, I have spoken with the clinic personnel that I'm dealing with, they also recognize the inaccuracies in the reporting, and they are not assuming what's read in there is our feelings. And I just want to say that we still have a good working relationship, and there's no doubt in my mind, as I've spoken to them recently, that we're going to come up with an amicable solution to our issue.
Yeah.
That is not appropriate.
No, it is not. The hospital, the headline read, "Hospital District Rejects BOCC Offer." Well, that's absolutely incorrect. We never made an offer to the hospital district, so I don't know how in the world a paper thinks they could reject an offer that we never made. My wife is not a public health nurse, her name happens to be Cindy Flower. It just, she never reported to this board anything. I did not reject anything. I opposed in debate a motion that was made, and it, that motion passed two to one. I didn't reject anything. As a commissioner, I voted against it and I debated against it. I don't have the authority to reject anything. It just absolutely wasn't worth the paper it was printed on, and I'm just, I'm over it. So Mr. Hedberg knows how that works.
Well, that's a fact, that was very bad, and they have a misunderstanding. There's three of us here, it's not any one person running rampant here.
Yeah. So I'm going to let it go at that. I certainly have a lot of things I could rant and rave about, but I'm going to take the high road. Anything else, gentlemen, commissioner items? Yes, sir, go ahead.
If I may, please.
Yep.
Speaking of, what did we refer to it as, frivolous thank yous or whatever?
Oh, insincere.
Sicko fan.
Sicko fan.
Okay, here we go. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You spent your Thanksgiving weekend with two other gentlemen building a wall for Department of Human Services. It looks great, and I just want to commend you and the two associates you had working with you for getting that done during our holiday.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
They really astonished me when I walked by and looked in there and saw it.
Yeah, I hope to get it painted and finished up this weekend, so, yeah, and I want to publicly thank Steve Peterman and our maintenance individual, Ivan Mars, they certainly assisted. And I believe it's appropriate that they get paid for their efforts, so by consent, I would ask that it's okay, and thank you for bringing that up, thanks for your compliment, that we pay them for their hours. We worked 12 hours, all three of us worked 12 hours. Of course, I'm not going to submit any hours for that because I get paid to be a commissioner, but certainly feel it's appropriate to...
It's okay by me.
Pay those guys.
Do you want a formal motion?
Uh, you know, I would guess, counsel, you think that...
It's under, unless you're going to give fighting bucks.
I would put a weight to it. I think it would be appropriate for the type of work they did on a holiday weekend, $20 an hour would seem very reasonable to me, and I'm open for debate, I'm just throwing that on the table.
Certainly, if you'd like to make that in a formal motion, that'd be great. I do want to say, too, I did post this in the paper for three weeks, put it out to bid, never got one response, so...
Let's just cap it, that's 240 bucks.
Make a motion, then.
Okay, I move that we allocate $20 an hour for whatever the amount of time was.
Because we're not done yet, that's the problem.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fair.
To be paid to Ivan Mars, our maintenance young man, and I don't remember the other...
Steve Peterman.
And Steve Peterman.
Who has worked for the county before on contract labor.
For the work that they've done.
Thank you.
And if there's additional hours they put in, they should be paid.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm moving a second to pay Steve Peterman and Ivan Mars for their work that they assisted me with over the holiday weekend, which I think is another thing, yeah, it was a Friday right after Thanksgiving, we were on holiday, but we needed to do that in a time where we wouldn't disrupt the business, so I appreciate that. Discuss further discussion?
Yeah, one last thing, because you brought up Thanksgiving, and I mentioned it the last meeting, but John Carroll did a great job bringing in, you know, that contact that we made for him to get the meals up here, and it wasn't not only $40,000 worth of food, it was the meals, and then they gave 250 bucks a head, and you saw it in the Sentinel. Sentinel did a good job covering it.
Okay, well, hold on, because we're in debate of whether or not to pay these guys.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were...
And then I would like to talk about that some more. So further discussion, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay.
Yeah, jumped the gun, sorry about that.
And Kara, could you pull a couple of vouchers and put their names on them so I do not forget that? We need to get that in the process, thank you.
Ivan, and what was the other name?
Steve Peterman, standard spelling. Ivan Mars, Steve Peterman. Now, yeah, so before we move on, then...
Yeah, the point was just to reiterate, John did a very good job handling that, got everybody engaged, had to fend them off for a while because they were late getting it up the hardscrabble because it was too, too heavy for the truck and slippery, so, anyway, at that time, so I think he deserved it.
Yeah, great, great activity.
Just a pat on the back, we didn't do that last meeting.
I talked to John, too, and he, not John Carroll, but the other John that came up with the ministries, and he said they want to do another deal at Christmas, and I suggested they consider talking to the Lutheran church to move indoors.
Yep.
Because in December, who knows?
Be hard to have it outside.
Yeah, who knows what kind of weather they're going to run into, but, man, what a great guy, and they helped out a lot of people. I think we talked about it briefly at our last meeting, but I also stopped over at Kara's chair.
That's why I wanted to bring it up, we were talking about it.
Yeah, so, okay, anything else, sir?
Nope.
We kind of got off on the whole attorney item thing, but anything else for you?
You haven't asked me yet.
Oh, I thought we did, sorry.
We are at the...
Oh, we're still on commissioner, yeah. Sorry, 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 sir.
Well, I was loaded for bear here.
Okay, well, I'll get to you, and you can pull both triggers. Upper Ark, I just, and you gentlemen may know this, the December meetings, both the Conservancy District and the Enterprise meeting have been canceled, so they're not going to meet in December, which was good for me.
Helps us all out, because I was going to run over there after that broadband, if we had to.
Okay, yeah, no, they're, they have...
They're gone.
Cancelled that, yeah, I'll be out of town, so that's off the books, the next meeting, of course, is in January. Have continued to get some information from the water courts and from their attorney about the pending lawsuits, so I've been filing those away, you're welcome to look at them. Anytime, and I don't, maybe you guys are getting copies of those also.
Okay, I'm getting them.
All right, good, good, good. Anything else on Upper Ark? Go ahead.
Just real quickly, I spent some time with Commissioner Feld, who's on board with, and I asked him realistically, are you guys interested in what we have to say? I know our ranchers and farmers have a proposal that we're making, he says we're taking it very seriously, so I was very encouraged by that comment, I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, Trey Terry, Skanga also, but I've been bugging him, and they are, the reason they've delayed it is because they're doing the engineering on it to see if I'm valid or not.
And I'm fine with that, I just didn't want him to, I didn't want him to blow off our recommendation, I mean, it's their job to assess it and make that recommendation to the court or not, so I wanted to make sure. So he was, he was amenable to getting it right.
Good, thank you. Anything else, sir? Okay, move on. Attorney items.
The highlight of the morning.
All I live for. All I live for.
Actually, I just, I was going through here, I just found something I wanted to talk about very briefly, because I got a, an email from a gentleman named John Hervey, H-E-R-Z-E-Y.
Yep, J.R., yep.
Okay, so you know him.
Oh, yeah, I know him very well.
All right, because, and I wanted to just, I'm assuming he got my email address probably from you, Kara? Because normally people, anyway, he was asking, he was asking me a legal, he wanted legal advice from me, and I responded by saying, I'm the county attorney, I represent you, not citizens in the county. But I did go ahead and answer his question, because it was pretty short and simple about open range and his horses getting out on Highway 96 and everything, so, but I just wanted to ask, if somebody calls and wants to get in touch with me, find out what they want, you know, if they're asking, if they want to ask me legal advice, it's not my job to get legal advice to the citizens, okay?
That was probably me, because somebody called me and wanted your contact.
Well, you should know better.
Personal email or county email?
It, it came on the Custer County gov.
Okay.
He didn't say what he wanted, he just said...
And I didn't know you all knew him.
I need to get in touch with the county attorney.
And he was here at our last meeting.
Oh, was he?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was here.
He was standing in the back.
Well, I answered his question for him, and he was very grateful for that.
Just as reference, when we were talking about Reach, he's the gentleman that said he went off a horse, broke his back, and they flighted him out.
Okay, I'd had experience.
So anybody, I mean, a lot, I have had calls before wanting your phone number or your email, you don't want us to get that.
Try to find out what they want, I mean, it may be somebody...
If it's county business.
It's fair to ask him what the status is.
But if people just start calling me because I'm the county attorney, and they think I'm, I had a lot of people think I'm the county prosecutor, and they want me to file charges against somebody, so...
I thought you could defend me in a lawsuit.
But if somebody called and said, hey, I have a county business question I want to ask your attorney, they could do that.
Yeah, I'll give it a try, if, you know, if this is somebody, and since we heard from our constitutional scholar here who would be just as qualified as the ones we heard yesterday, I mean, I got to say, you know, it's so embarrassing, having gone to law school, you think, when you're in law school, you think those law professors are just godlike, but they are up there in their ivory towers, and they don't know anything about the real world, and, but it may cause me to dig out my own Bible for the Constitution, that, and reading her column in the Sentinel.
Okay, well, at least, at least I'm not in trouble, maybe.
Yeah.
For now.
I was just reading what high crimes and misdemeanors are in a book that I, you know, place a lot of confidence in, so, okay. Attainable housing, had a lot of emails back before, you know, Brenda over at Central Colorado Title and Escrow had some questions. One of them was, she wanted to know if Kelly would waive the recording fee. I said, probably.
But it's in statute that if the county is grant or grantee, there's no recording fee.
Okay, and the same thing with JD issuing the tax certificates and everything, I assume he doesn't, there's no fee for doing that either, so... The policy, the title insurance policy will be about $415, that'll be a responsibility of Colorado College. The closing cost for them to actually do the closing, Central Colorado, is $250, that's customarily split between both sides, and I said, I think the county will pay, it's half of that. And I've been communicating with the woman at Colorado College who's handling this, because Brenda said they thought they'd be able to get everything done, we could close no later than December 20. December 20 is actually the day they go off on Christmas break at CC, so they're, this woman is anxious to get it all done ahead of time, so I told Brenda, if you can get all the paperwork done ahead of time, I'll run it up there if necessary, because they were going to mail it, and then I take some time to run it up there and get it signed, and then they can send the check or wire, the money, or whatever they want to do. then they can send the check or wire the money or whatever they wanna do, so I've been working on that.
Can I tag on to that too?
Yeah.
Cause I talked to Brenda this morning, cause she said you told her to call me, and-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
About, cause she asked me if I needed a statement of authority, who was gonna sign, all of that, and I said, well, I didn't know that, I mean, we're the buyer, so what are we signing? And she said, the transfer declaration and that goes to J.D. and all that, and she said, um, I said, well, why would we need a statement of authority, because we're not the seller? And she said, well, we just always get it from both parties, so, I don't know if you guys wanna do, uh, I mean, I don't think it's necessary, um, and I'm assuming that Tom would sign as the chairman, and, uh, so-
Well, it's gonna be my recommendation, unless you had some other policy in effect, it's just paperwork for them.
Yeah.
And the same thing, we've got from Colorado College, I actually have a resolution from them authorizing a particular individual to sign this, and Brenda said that was sufficient, so we've got all that.
Just move on.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's-
It's all good.
We should get it all done before the twentieth for sure.
Okay.
Um, let's see, oh, Kara got a Cora request from Jordan Hedberg this week, wanting all of the email communications between you and me, and I told her the answer to that is, you know, really simple, that's all confidential, cause it had to do with EMS hospital district, uh, the ambulance dispute, and I said, that is all confidential, attorney-client privilege, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna disclose any of that. Uh, I said, what he would be entitled to is the letter, and we never, the letter that was approved on, at our November thirteenth meeting to make an offer to the hospital district, which apparently they voted on on November twenty-one without ever having an offer, uh, but if that letter is ever actually issued, then certainly he can have that, and the same thing, the letter that you authorized me to draft at our November twenty-seven meeting, uh, which is on the agenda today, so.
Yeah, that supersedes the other one.
Well, there isn't another letter.
There is another letter. We just totally sent it, so there's no other letter.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but-
Well, and I, since it wasn't, so maybe once I have a copy-
It's not official, anything.
But, I mean, it was, they voted, as I understand, on the basis of what Lisa Drew told them after that meeting on November thirteen, they just went ahead and rejected the offer in their own meeting, if the reporting was accurate, they-
They remade the offer.
So, um, okay.
They got court going on today?
No, I think it must be resting.
Okay, that's, yeah, those are all the things that I wanted to talk about then, that's all I have.
All right, sir, thank you, um, yeah, I read the email from Kara, uh, was that Cora request in person, or did he email that to you?
He brought it in.
He brought it in, gave it to you?
Yeah, to Kelly, and then I had-
Uh, and we have seventy-two hours to respond, is that correct?
He said he wasn't in a hurry. I mean, you've got that long to respond, but, yeah.
Doesn't matter, I just wonder what statute says, so, uh, and this says requesting, and I'm paraphrasing here, because this is from Kara, requesting all correspondence regarding EMS Wetmore Ambulance and Hospital Clinic from the commissioners, or to the commissioners, and Clint, so there's really three things in there, if that's, if the word is correct.
And that's the way I took it too, not just emails between you guys, but any between you guys, between you and the clinic.
Any, anything regarding the EMS, is what I got.
So, uh, and I, I guess we go back and glean our email, do a search and-
Well, I assumed, I mean, the way I read it, I thought you wanted to know what we were talking about back and forth.
Yeah, and I didn't get that.
Okay, and I, but it is, he came in and used the form that they had in their office and filled it in handwritten as to what he wanted, and I wasn't quite clear on what he was asking for, but as between us, it's very clear that anything I send you, the confidential memos I send you are just that, it's some legal advice.
If you were, this is a legal question, if you were carbon copied on something that I happened to send to, let's say, the director of the clinic, is, does that, is that attorney-client privilege or not?
Uh, it's public, yeah.
I, if you've sent it to the clinic, you've put it out there, so I, yeah, there wouldn't be any problem, you're just copying me on something.
Right, um, and so I'll, I'll read what he read, or what he wrote, I'm sorry, on the Cora request, all correspondence regarding EMS Wetmore Ambulance and Hospital Clinic from the county commissioners or to, T-O-O, the commissioners and, or to the commissioners and county attorney Clint Smith, emails or letters. So to me, I, I look at that as three different things.
It is.
All right, yeah, well, I'm not aware of anything that would fall into that.
Yeah, I don't think we've had much, I don't, um, but-
I think everything that we've here has been discussion on the record in public meetings.
In other meetings, like down at the Ranchers Roost over at the clinic.
I have a couple of emails where, um, setting up meetings and things like that, is that what, do you need those? I think when I said we'll meet at ten o'clock on Wednesday.
Says he wants it all.
I, I mean, I guess if you've got all that, we can certainly make that available, I had the impression he was going for more substance than just, you know, schedule or something, but I don't think he cares about the schedule.
It would've taken me several hours to get all that together, to talk about building meetings.
And, and I think he has to pay for that, doesn't he?
Anything that takes you longer than an hour to get together, the first hour is free, and then anything that you give to him, like if you give him copies, twenty-five cents a copy. If it's, if it's something that you can put on a jump drive or something, then, uh, I don't think there's any charge for that. And your emails, Jay, um-
Yes, ma'am.
Vernon can help you with, cause I know, uh, several years ago, the commissioners had a Cora request that involved their emails, and Chuck, I don't know how he does it, he probably just went through and did some kind of search.
Yeah, you can do it.
And, so if there is a lot that, you know, it would take you a lot of time-
I don't think there's a lot.
He might be able to, it might be able to be some, he could look up and fairly show you.
And the question, I'm sorry, the question I had is, have we received any kind of formal communication from the hospital district? The, the board apparently voted at their November twenty-one meeting, um, but we learned about it through the paper, we, there wasn't any-
I've not seen anything.
Nor have I.
Yes, sir.
Nope. Interesting also that there is no date, no time and date on this public records request, so.
That he dated it?
He did not, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, I should've dated it, I'll, I'll date that when I received it, yeah, yeah.
Was it Monday?
Um, I'm trying to think, uh-
How far back is it?
I think it was Monday, yeah.
It was Monday, because it was the same day I was doing the grant.
Yeah, I think it was Monday.
All I've seen here, going clear back into the summer, are meeting announcements, location for EMS workshop, we had EMS workshop.
Well, yeah, I've got, I probably got fifty or sixty of them, so.
Yeah, I've got a bunch of them.
But anyway, we'll work on that, uh, do we provide those to you then, Clint? Does it need to go through our attorney, or does it go straight, straight to-
If there's anything that's questionable to you that you feel might be confidential, have me look at it, but if it's just routine and stuff like that, just give it to-
What about Jay's work with the committee?
Cora to Kara.
Who actually has you?
Stuff you work with the committee, you had, you had a-
Yeah, I have lots of emails between myself and the committee when we're gonna meet and stuff like that.
Yeah, any, any.
All right, I'll get it together.
Let me read it again, but, uh-
They come to me, I don't know if that ever-
All correspondence regarding EMS.
How much can I charge over an hour, cause it's gonna take me longer than that.
Uh, you know, I'll have to, I'll have to look, it's in that policy, we have a policy, and, um, it says in that policy how much. I wanna say twenty-five dollars an hour, but I don't know.
Uh, any, no.
Well, I think Jay should charge attorney fees, about three hundred, three fifty.
Easy.
Any documentation in the year of twenty nineteen, nothing prior to that.
Oh, is it twenty nineteen?
I have it, and I will, I will put those together, I'll just-
Should we gonna send it electronically, or copy, hard copy?
Well, whatever you wanna do, put to you, whatever you do, give it to Kara, and she'll deal with the Cora.
I mean, I got a lot of-
See, that's cause he is a Kara and Cora.
Yeah, what do we do about phone messages that went back and forth?
That applies to that as well.
And one of the correspondence, and he didn't talk about-
Yeah, I was gonna say, he didn't mention phone in there, so.
No, but if you send an email-
Emails are fine printing out, but I don't even show I know how to print out a phone contact thing.
Yeah, I send mine to my computer and print them out from here.
You can print them off your phone, you just gotta hook up to-
I'll look at, if there's anything, if there's any substance at all, I'll print, I'll figure out and get it to you.
Welcome to Kara. But everything I have on my phone is on the computer.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
On the computer.
Uh, thank you, sir, so, uh, anything else from attorney items?
No.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Administrative assistant?
Before you leave, leave that, so what's our deadline to get it to?
Nothing, well, seventy-two hours from Monday, so it'll be tomorrow, no? Well, it's when we get them, right, or is it seventy-two hours from when he submits them, cause we were out of town?
Um, it's, the clock starts running from the time she receives it.
Which was Monday afternoon.
That was last, Monday, so it's a big spike.
She, I mean, routinely, if it's something like during the election part, you know, if she gets a request, she contacts and says, you can, I need more time, people are usually, and Jordan already indicated apparently to you.
Yeah, that he wasn't in a huge hurry for it, and so, I mean, you guys were gone for those three days, so, yeah.
I assume if we get it to him the first part of next week, it's not gonna be a problem?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what-
So let's pick a date and time to have that done then.
Can you have it done by next Monday, or is that too soon?
I can help.
Yeah, Monday.
Close the business Monday.
Uh, then you won't get it till Tuesday.
Yeah, if you come across anything, though, that you think is questionable about attorney-client, you know, let me know, but I doubt that there's anything you're gonna find like that.
Okay, so close the business on Monday, that work killed. Okay, uh, yeah, so let's, I would assume you'll create some kind of a file and everything we send to you, you can just send it to that file and then dump it on the jump drive, and he said he will come here and pick it up. We might shoot him an email and tell him it'll be available.
And then usually what, when I get a Cora request, that I do, everything that's in that, I keep that together, and I have it in a file, so that you have that.
Yes, I will do that as well, thank you.
And do you need a copy of all that eventually, or?
Um, no, I think I'm, as long as Kara, Kara.
I know.
Cora to Kara.
I know.
We have a Kara request.
Kara, Kara, Kara.
We got a Kara request, and we'll have to give us Cora.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
It doesn't help that my granddaughter's name is Cora.
Oh, really?
So that's really confusing for me.
Family name?
All right, so we will move on, um, and nothing you said, ma'am? Okay, all right, public comment?
Hard picking out names.
Any public comment this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you, sir?
Now, I have to repeat the whole attainable housing thing again.
That's right.
I've been sending him copies.
I can say, he probably knows, but, uh, staff reports, we will, would you mind swinging that door back open, sir? We can open it now, we just closed it, cause there was some noise.
Rift raft out there, looks like Rusty, there he is.
There was some noisy rift raft in the hall, we had to close it up.
There he is, the man of the hour.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Good, good to see you. I'm telling you right off the bat, all right, Commissioner Kanda is a bulldog when it comes to Four Rivers. Oh, he was up in their grill about wanting the radio for your new skid steer.
And not only that, they, they cut us the power, so we're, we want the radio for sure now, because he derated it.
Oh, he was on him, he was on him like stink on a June bug, I was proud of him.
Get on him.
Yeah.
With quote-unquote, right?
Stink on a June bug, oh, terrible.
That's a good thing.
How are you?
Twenty nineteen.
Stink on a June bug.
Stink on a June bug, June bug is the word, exactly, but, you want one of these, Miss Kel?
Please.
So what's your holiday schedule, Rusty?
You got another?
Twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen.
Oh, you got enough, nope.
Well, she could have these.
After you get done?
Yeah.
Okay.
What are you gonna do first, nineteen, we're looking at them both.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty close to last year's.
Run it under.
In fact, it'll probably be two twenty, I imagine, by the end of the month, hopefully.
Quarterly report, right? But you've entered into, entered data into the fourth quarter as to date, I'm assuming you did.
Yeah, this, this is just through November.
Here.
It's, it's current as of the thirtieth, is that right?
Right.
December.
Yeah, we have, cause I didn't print this until we had a little business.
Oh, I see the difference in the numbers, yeah, so it does include some business in December, but, we'll get another one eventually at the end of the year, beginning of next year, gotcha?
Correct.
So if we look at everything prior to December, then it would be an accurate reflection.
Right.
Down a little, though, when we-
November was a couple thousand.
Yeah, just, uh, that's because of those roll-off containers that they're not bringing out like they used to.
Third quarter was up compared to last year, as was second, and, yeah, the second, third quarter was up a little, not significant, but, so, got a question for you, really. So you're saying as to date, twenty nineteen, you've turned in two hundred and nine thousand dollars in cash?
Right.
And eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Right.
And ten cents.
And ten cents.
Oh, I threw that in. Um, and you're just not seeing these construction roll-off dumpsters like you expected?
Yeah, right, right.
Why is that, Rusty, do you know?
I don't know, I don't know what's going on, because that's-
They're building more.
Oak disposals deal, I don't know if their trucks have been broke down that much, I don't know what they've got going on, but, just don't see them, because when Leonard Allamott was over there, we had them roll-offs every day.
Wow, you getting any from him?
No, they don't have a roll-off truck.
They don't now? Thought they picked up.
They just have one trash truck.
I know they got the trash truck.
Okay, what else, uh?
I have a guy, an employee, that's gonna get surgery on his shoulder the twenty-first I have a guy, an employee, that's gonna get surgery on his shoulder the twenty-first of January. And he's gonna be out, could be out for twelve weeks.
Wow.
Maximum of twelve weeks, correct? Because that's what the FNLA is.
Maybe Gary can stand in for him.
Is that an armicod injury?
No.
Yeah, we had some discussion at the CCI conference, we just got back from about this whole FNLA thing, and. I don't understand it all, believe me, but do you feel like you're gonna have to replace him?
Well, we're gonna have to get somebody hired up, I would think.
Sorry, I didn't mean replace, I mean.
Temporary.
Temporary.
Temporarily.
Uh, I think that we better get somebody that wants to take over that lab show. When I leave.
Okay, you just.
Which could be.
You're switching.
Which could be.
You can still discuss that, but.
Yeah, which could be April.
Okay, so let's go back, though. My question stands, do you believe we need to find somebody temporarily to take his position while he's out? Or can you get by?
No, I think that we should get somebody that's gonna be there permanently.
To replace the shoulder.
That's gonna replace me.
I know that, but I think they're two different conversations.
And then, when this person is there, then we'll have.
Well, if you're trying to roll in to get that guy.
They're saying, let's find a replacement, let him fill that slot in, sorry.
As, well, he's out.
That's where you were headed, okay.
Because he'll lap into April.
Yeah. Yes, if that's gonna be three months, you know, and then.
Yeah, you were thinking faster than I could process, but I got you now.
So the answer is yes to Tom's question, and yours.
And so, we can discuss this again, but I'm thinking probably, or, you know, the first of February, we should probably have somebody.
On board.
We gotta figure out when we're gonna advertise his position.
Which will need to be fairly quickly.
Pretty quick.
Um. Technically, counsel, I defer to you, correct me if I misspeak. Technically, we cannot advertise for that position until we have something in writing. For your position.
Resignation?
Oh, now wait a minute, don't be, don't be, don't be so hasty. But I believe that's what the law says, we cannot advertise for a position until it's been officially announced about a pending vaca, uh, vacate of that.
And I, I think that's correct, but I'm not really sure.
So just a general conversation, I would encourage you to pick a date and time that we can function from.
Like you said, sometime in April, is it the thirtieth or?
Yeah. So, you know, I don't, we don't need an end of the day, but eventually, yeah, I think we're gonna need. So then we can't post that posi, we can't post a position, I don't believe, that's not.
You must know a date.
Been notified, that we have been notified.
I think, yeah, you do need the formal notification.
But, so you're suggesting, though, that if and when we bring a person on, that person fills your void in this position.
Right, right.
And then reverts back to supervisor, director, what is your official title?
Manager.
Manager. Uh, and he goes out the twenty-first, probably twenty, whatever that ends up.
Twenty-first of January.
Is his surgery date, so he probably worked up until then.
Yeah.
So we need that.
February, March, gets sixty days, and then, then, I'll go all of April, sounds like.
Good.
Um, so I suppose we need to have some discussion about a job description, job title, salary range, how, and I would appreciate input from you on that. And then I'm assuming the four of us, I'm just talking out loud here, Commissioner Prince, could conduct the interviews and.
Like we do.
Because this would be a county, this would be a commissioner hire.
I think the supervisor would make sense for the three of us to be involved. If it was someone working as an assistant, kinda like we had with the road position.
Rusty.
Then I'm fine with the supervisor making it, but since we're target supervisors.
Right, that's my point, I think, and ask Rusty to assist us in that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Be good with that, so.
It'll just cost.
No problem, money's not an issue.
That's what I was thinking.
Not the kind of money you're talking about.
That's what I was thinking.
Twenty bucks, thirty bucks, no big deal.
Yeah. Cheeseburger.
Yeah, cheeseburger, it's paradise. So, um, but, to Commissioner Canada's point, if we wanna bring that person on first of February.
Her payroll's going up until?
We probably need to act on that, try to get something in the paper yet in December. That's what I'm thinking. If we wait until January, we post it for two weeks. And that gives us two weeks to get interviews done and hire somebody and get an acceptance to your offer, that's a little tight.
I would think, for the kind of position that Rusty has, we ought to go outside of just local, so it may take longer. We may wanna, I mean, I'm sure there's a, is there, I'm guessing, is there an association of landfill in Colorado? Maybe someone in another county would be interested in taking your job, or, I don't know, I'm just, I would hate to just restrict it to Custer County, um, advertising.
Yeah, you know, it's, um, they do post it on Swanna, and that, and that takes over the whole country.
Okay, well, that's what I'm referring to.
But I don't know if you wanna go that far, I don't know.
Well, yeah, doesn't matter, be all right.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have some local interest, but I've always maintained.
And we look at local.
We need to post it.
Right everywhere.
Outside of Custer County, I don't know about nationally, but if that's what it does, it's what it does. You don't have a state association.
Yeah, and there's, there's Colorado, too.
If you could get that information. That'd be great, or I can look it up.
Because I'm a member, so.
If you don't have a copy of your job description, maybe asking Donna for a copy of it, and then you can update it.
Actually, I do.
Okay, if you could update it, too, that'd be great.
Does it have a cardboard recycling part of it in it?
No.
See?
No, that's for the recycling.
Well, yeah, but he gotta, he gotta know he's gonna manage.
New guy wouldn't manage that, that's still the recycling, right?
Right.
Can we, can you meet back with us on the eighteenth?
Sure.
So.
Yes, I can.
Uh, we doing any business? Just.
Is that here or Wetmore?
No, here. Uh, discussion with land. We're done with Wetmore. So, a. We're done meeting.
For the moment, we're done with Wetmore.
Stop, make it rephrase this, rephrase that one.
We are done meeting in Wetmore for the remainder of twenty nineteen. So let's phrase that, discussion with the landfill manager about hiring process. We're done with Wetmore.
Take a look at your resume and date it.
Yeah, well, okay, so you, can you, uh, would you be in a position to bring us a date by the middle of December or not? And actually, we would need something in writing by the middle of December if we're gonna vote to post it.
Absolutely.
That's what I believe.
Absolutely.
If not, we can hold off.
Have to wait and move things that way.
Just saying that I'm retiring in such-and-such day from Custer County.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's all, I mean, just a one statement deal. Then we know we're.
And thank you very much.
Uh.
You don't have to go that far.
Okay, well.
And, and nobody's holding to a date, so you can pick a date. If it goes down further, then we gotta worry about how we cover the vacancy you got.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that, you know, you could pick a date, you could retire, you could also unretire. You know, we'd take our approval of that, but you could say, you know, I would like to stay on until X time. I mean, you pick a date so that we can move forward, but it.
Yeah.
You know, you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, that's true.
Right.
Although I really would hate to have additional payroll for a long period of time. You know, if you said, you know, I think I'm gonna stay till the end of twenty twenty, and we've already hired a replacement, now we're gonna have a little budgetary problem.
Right.
Might even have a personal problem. Uh, so. Yeah, so we're, we haven't budgeted for this either, so we're talking about duplicative salary for two months, basically, I'm guessing.
Could be.
Yeah.
Okay, right. So we're gonna talk with Miss Donna about that.
It's part of what we do.
Yeah. And you'll come with a salary range?
For the new employee?
For that position, forget the employee, but for that position from this day forward. Because these open-ended salaries are killing us financially.
You look at comparable-sized counties with comparable-sized landfills, and, you know, we need to be realistic, fair, and equitable, but I don't think we, you know.
But who better to do that than this man?
Well, here's the man.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thanks.
We'll come up with something, some kind of number.
Great.
Buy it lunch, because I know we're talking a lot overtime and. We need some brevity in our meeting this morning.
So, and you do have kind of an issue, because he's the only other guy that can operate a belly dump, aren't you, around here?
Scraper?
Scraper. No, there's guys at Road and Bridge.
But Gary, you had, did you have a couple of them?
Oh, no, I gave you one to kill.
We don't have any equipped with that.
I know, but you got, can, can, I thought Rusty was the.
He's the preferred method, all right.
Mm-hmm.
Go-to guy. All right, sir, if you would do that, that would help us out.
Okay.
And I appreciate you coming to the table with that now, so that we can start making plans, because the calendar will go by in a hurry.
Yeah, it's moving pretty fast, so.
It was coming up.
Then another question is to, to commissioners and yourself. If the calendar works out, is two months sufficient transitional period to train somebody? Is it too much time?
No, no, I might have to be landfill consultant for the rest of the year.
Volun, he forgot the word voluntary.
Thank you, I'm all in on that, yeah, I'd love to have you help out, yeah.
A badge in kind.
So if we can do that, meet with you on the eighteenth, that'd be huge.
Yeah.
You better get.
Then we'll meet on the eighteenth.
It's all deductible, we'll write you a letter saying, here's the value of your services, and you can deduct it off your retirement.
Services would be worth the way to that paper. Anything else, sir?
No, I think that about does it for this day.
Okay.
Then I will be back on the eighteenth.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
And we're behind times here, guys.
You're doing us a favor, go. All right, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Have a wonderful day.
Yep, you guys have a good rest of the day.
Truck as a going-away present, right?
Yeah, he takes.
Yeah.
You're gonna want that new pickup truck as a going-away present?
Yeah, that's everything I'd get.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Road and Bridge, bye, golly, look at here.
How are you?
Good. Good morning. I'll start everyone.
Gary.
Morning, Kelly.
Good morning, Jerry, how are you?
Good.
How's things going in your world?
Good, good.
Hey, when you're done, Tom and I sat in a pretty good meeting on road and bridge stuff, and I brought some stuff back for you.
Okay.
Previously, if, if I may, before you go.
No, right ahead.
Previously, we've had road and bridge supervisors attend the CCI meetings, because it's also the.
Cars.
Cars meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I sat in on two of their meetings, one because I had no idea what rip-rap was, and I wanted to learn. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Okay. The other was another session I was really. I had no idea, so I gotta go find out what this is, rip-rap, whatever, anyway. But there were a lot of people, road and bridge people from different counties that were there, and it sounded like they had a tremendous amount of information that was disseminated. So I'm just thinking, you know, maybe you wanna consider that sometime in the future.
Gary, you talked about that before.
Yeah, we've talked about going to, I mean, in the past, but something's come up, and I wasn't able to make it, and then.
Roger went last year.
Yeah, I think Roger went last year, and that was the year that I wasn't able to go. But, yeah, I'd, I'd like to attend those if it works out.
I do want to mention, I thought it was, seemed very worthwhile to me.
Yeah, I think they are, they're, they're a good thing to attend.
Colorado Association of Road Supervisors and Engineers.
You know, I would always wondered what that was, I was embarrassed to ask.
Yeah, I was too, but I.
Doesn't make, it does not make sense when you look at it.
They told me so. All right, what you got, sir?
I need to get this signed, but you three, it's just our inventory of the roads that we're gonna, at the CDOT for HUTF reimbursement monies.
Um. Okay.
Have we done this every year?
Commissioner.
Yes, we do it every year, yeah, asked me, and every year, and the commissioners have to sign.
Commissioner Canada and I have a question for you.
Okay.
How many miles?
Lane miles, let's do centerline miles of paved roads, paved being asphalt or chip seal in Custer County.
Uh, with, including Wetmore, we've got probably forty-six.
Not about Wetmore.
Yeah, we've got some down there, we take care of.
How much was your number?
It's forty-six.
Forty-six?
That's double what we thought.
Is that lane miles or centerline miles?
No, that's centerline miles.
Wow, so fifty-two.
It's ninety.
Jack's the cost way up, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much are you paying?
Uh, we've got three sixty total, so it's two hundred, or, I'm sorry, three hundred and eighteen.
Yeah.
Wow, look at him do that now.
Or three twelve on ten.
Oh, he's on it this morning.
He goes to sleep with it.
It's early.
He sees every washboard in it.
Yeah, not that, what I just asked you had anything to do with this, really, it was the subject come up during the conference, and we guessed, we had fifteen miles. Centerline miles of paved roads.
Hermit and.
Yeah, in fact, I've got it all down on the map, I've got everything, um.
Yeah.
On the map, but anyway, I can, I can send that to you.
Yeah, we, I certainly never thought about Wetmore, I was thinking about up here.
Remember, you said we're done with Wetmore.
We don't have a lot, we don't have a lot in Wetmore, I'm gonna say only.
No, but you got San Isabels and stuff.
So.
Is there thirty?
Chip seal, oh, I forgot, Lake Dewey's Road, I was thinking.
And Oak Creek out to.
Yeah, we got Colfax.
Out to Rosita, that's right.
Colfax, Macy, we've got Schoolfield, we've got Muddy, we've got Kettle Lane, we've got the Pines, we've got Copper Golds, we've got Oak Creek Grade.
Couple miles everywhere, it adds up.
Oh, yeah, it sure does.
Yeah. Well, we just went through a rough calculation in this session at the, at the CCI conference, and, uh, the Colorado Pavement Association, whatever, I, that, that's who the speaker was, suggest, by his calculations, we should be earmarking a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year just for maintaining fifteen miles of paved road. And, uh, so I said, yeah, that's not happening in Custer County, and everybody's laughing, said it doesn't happen in any of our counties, but they had a formula based on square, square foot. Can you imagine spending a hundred and eighty grand a year on fifteen miles? That was just on fifteen miles, you triple that if it's forty-five.
Five hundred and forty.
So that'd be five hundred and forty thousand dollars a year just to maintain existing, nothing new and not, not dirt roads, that was just to maintain those paved roads.
He said he had another formula for the dirt, we probably oughta get that from him. It was worth listening to.
Uh, sorry, I.
And the philosophy was great, so we, that's why I wanted to talk to you, he's got a bunch of stuff here that we can discuss.
Kinda digress, Chair would entertain a motion on certifying the HUTF miles.
I move, we certify Gary's HUTF miles at four, three hundred and sixty total miles, three hundred and sixty dot six four seven.
Been moving seconded that we certify, uh, to CDOT our, our HUTF miles.
So there's three categories, one's for three sixty dot six four seven, the other's twenty and three quarters, and then thirteen and point two miles.
We've got some.
That are non-HUT.
We've got some, um, some Forest Service roads, and then we've got some city roads.
So it'll be three hundred and eighty one.
Three hundred and eighty.
For HUTF, right?
Yeah, but we only receive the funding for the three sixty.
So three sixty's only the funding, these are non-funded ones that they make.
Oh, streets.
They're just certifying what they have, so.
Right, yeah, some of them are Silver Cliff and.
So it's miles of arterial streets and miles of local streets, total is three sixty, six.
Yep, we take care of it.
Further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor of authorizing or certifying three hundred and sixty point six miles of HUTF roads, say aye.
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 Colorado crushers are moving in this morning.
Oh, no way.
You're gonna crush them now?
Yeah, they were up here doing stuff for Camp Beach, and, oh, he was all done, so they moved from his boyar pit down south by Centennial or Antro.
Really?
Us this morning, and I have yet to speak with him, since they started moving in, I gotta run it there after I get there.
Did you sign that, please? Come here, I'll say goodbye to you, I know you're heading out.
Everything go all right this morning?
Everything moving all good.
Perfect, Mike, pardon.
You, thanks, no.
Mike, my pleasure.
Heading back to Indiana, be careful, sir, thank you for stopping by.
Sorry to interrupt.
Nope, that's all right, we're just signing the documents, so, all right, buddy, take care.
I'll let you know when we're back home.
Okay.
This is a quote that I got from brushers and rush trucks and water trucks.
Okay.
You want one of these plants, too?
Wow.
Pretty intense, isn't it?
It is, the truck itself, um.
Yeah, give one.
The truck itself, it was more than what I thought, I, uh, let's see, in two thousand and eighteen when we bought our three trucks, they ran one twenty-two, five fifty-two, so they've gone up fifty, six.
Tanked or not?
This is.
Non-tanked, this one twenty-two was non-tanked.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, they've gone up six, fifty, six hundred dollars.
What's your preference here?
I'd much rather go with that Mack.
I would assume you get, you're newer and.
Yeah, it's a year newer and they're just, I think they're more suitable for our off-road use.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion?
You go with the Mack truck?
Question before we, if we may please, before we do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is this gonna be an outright purchase or lease purchase?
That's something we can, um, I would just soon do an outright purchase.
That's what we talked about before, I thought we agreed.
We did budget.
That's what I thought it was, I just want to make sure that when the motion's made, it's for an outright purchase, not a lease purchase.
Alright, so I move that we, uh, authorize this expense to sure for a Mack truck per Gary's, uh, quote of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand and sixty-five bucks to purchase that truck.
Is there a second?
A second.
We're moving to second to purchase, uh, a twenty twenty-one Mack water truck for Road and Bridge, one fifty-eight oh sixty-five, discussion?
Is it possible that we, or should we consider maybe adding a little bit to that in case there are some incidentals that were not.
What did they tell you on this price, Gary?
Could come out his budget if there is, it shouldn't be significant, but.
Yeah, it says, this is the main thing, it's his, his budget's already been approved and he's got it.
Well, that and the company Brockners, as well as Cold Industries, the manufacturer that tank can put it on, anything above and beyond, they absorb that, because once they make this quote, they have to stand by that, so.
I was thinking maybe we're gonna get a decal on the side or a, you know, mud flaps or something, I, I was just thinking, you know, usually when, I'm thinking like, a consumer, I buy a car and they throw, you know, I gotta buy this, you know, that kinda stuff, I'm just wondering, I hate to hamstring you, if it's two thousand dollars more, I don't wanna say, oh, you can't buy it because we didn't authorize that, that's all I'm concerned about.
But he's using his own budget, we don't have to authorize.
Well, exactly, and it, uh, between the mud flaps and the decals, it's gonna be less than five hundred dollars, so it's not a large amount in the overall scheme of things, so. Sure.
Good point.
Good, yeah, good point, yeah, absolutely. Further discussion? Proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose na, most of Kerry.
What's the engine in it?
No, it's Mack engines.
I know. Three hundred dollars, less than three hundred dollars difference, I think, wow. Okay, got that taken care of, sir. A perfect example, gentlemen, of why we have possible action items under staff report right there.
Oh, did I get that, uh, from?
Yeah.
Did, uh, did Kelly or anybody need a copy of this?
Uh.
She said she didn't.
Certified HUTFs, probably, and then we better stick a file, copy of it in here, too.
Well, I can either copy of it, that'll work.
Easy.
That's all I've got.
Easy, dropping that money like, no problem.
Makes me sweat spending money like that.
You know, and just to recap, I mean, I think we all believe that's what we have to do to get these roads improved, right? Your blatant hands are sitting there waiting for water.
That's right.
So.
And that is exactly what, we, we had this discussion earlier, Commissioner Kanda and I, about getting our tax money on the roads and elsewhere for the counties, why they're paying it, this is exactly what we ought to be doing.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could mull this over for six more months and I'd be right back here saying, this is the best way to spend our money, let's give it to those more trucks, so.
No, this is, this is the right thing, in my mind.
Alright, sir, everything else looks reasonable to me, so.
Okay.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay, um, uh, just real quick, I wanna throw out something, ask you to give it some thought, uh, I think the commissioners are gonna give consideration, we have to, because we've been asked to do that, about how we're gonna handle, um.
Sickly.
Sickly accumulated vacation and sick leave time that's beyond what we can pay out.
Oh, okay.
Upon retirement. It's clearly spelled out in our personnel policy, the number of hours that an employee can accumulate, you have an employee that's significantly over that, so at some point, we're gonna have to have a discussion about bringing that back into line with our policies, personnel policy. Four hundred and eighty and three sixty, I believe, but, and I've got it, I could look it up, but I, I just think eventually we need to put this back on the agenda and have a conversation. With all the supervisors of these departments to make sure our employees don't have more hours on the books than what our policy allows for.
So use it or lose it is sort of the philosophy.
Workshop, yes.
Yeah, and Sherry and I talked about that, with, uh, we've got two employees that have gone over the maximum allowed sick leave, but anybody that's on board right now, they don't, it's not gonna go above the maximum allowed, so, I mean.
Right, you either use it or you lose it if you accumulate more than that.
Right, yeah. Now, I'll just throw something out, where I came from, what they used to do is instead of, what they did was, if you had your maximum amount of sick leave built up, um, what they would do is, you typically get one day a month for your sick leave, and what they would do is if you were built up to your maximum, they would, um, if you had two more months that you worked, didn't get any sick leave for it, they gave you like a half a day or one day vacation for it.
That's something we talked about.
So anyway, that's something that can say that.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think we can have that conversation, it's a hundred and sixty and two seventy-two is our payout numbers, they can carry four eighty and three sixty, I think. But we've got some employees that are over that, so we're gonna have to, have to work on that, but anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, so you can give that some thought if you haven't already, and I think we'll schedule a workshop and after the first of the year, we're still gonna have to make a decision about one of your employees and, and, uh, we'll get that done.
Okay.
Okay?
That's good.
Alright, sir, thank you.
You bet.
Have a great day today.
Good, thanks, Gary.
You too.
See you, Gary.
Well, I just would love to speak with Department Human Services this morning.
Well, good, I'm glad you are, no.
Good morning.
Half the world's happy, yeah.
Good morning.
Oh, it's just been crazy since we came back from the Thanksgiving, so it's just been crazy, crazy.
Were you able to get into your office with that new?
We were able to get in the office, yeah, we had to do a little dusting and that type of stuff, so.
Yeah, those work crews don't clean up after.
No, they don't, you know, they did some, but. No, it was fine.
Oh, now that work crew can get busy on that new table in here.
That's, that's up next.
You're gonna get a new table?
Yes, we are.
What's wrong with this one?
Too small.
There may be room.
Oh, crying out loud. Oh, oh, make it wider? I mean, I don't know.
We're gonna.
Make it shorter.
We're gonna actually give these two folks their own table space.
Wow.
They have their own now.
Clint and I are moving up in the world.
Yes, absolutely.
Look at you go.
Alright, so. Anything shaking and baking?
No, nothing's shaking and baking. Nothing is shaking and baking.
I ran into a gal at CCI who was very pleased that you and I attended their
Well.
Childhood development, I forgot the name of that.
Well, who did you run into?
Oh.
Oh, so you don't know? Okay, well, yes.
I introduced myself, so I know, I met you at the, we're so glad you guys were there.
Yeah, okay.
You're a blonde headed gal.
Yeah, I don't know.
Mr. Prince, you got anything on your mind?
I read this morning that there may be nature changes in snap, that President Trump is talking about doing something with that, I'm wondering if you are A, aware of it and B, what kind of impact it might have on our county, you don't know yet?
I don't, I haven't heard anything about.
Okay.
He said if you're even aware, there are certain criteria, you don't get the food stamps, you have to go to work and show your.
Right, they're trying to get people who are workable and just choose not to work to go to work, the concept.
Oh.
But I just didn't know how that would affect.
Wouldn't affect, uh, young mothers or what?
Now, it, there's a, it's called employment first, and if you're between such this age and this age and, um, yeah, you're able to go to work, there's criteria to it.
They're gonna change that criteria, make it.
Oh, are they?
And make it a little more stringent, so they have to go to work or they don't get the.
Yeah, well, what it was now is they could draw benefits for three months, and then if they weren't working, they were kicking them off, and that's what they were doing, and, but it's been pretty, um, some counties are exempt from having to do that because of the unemployment rate, because you can't have people go to work if there's no employment, and there's, it's, there's been a lot going on with it, and it's been back and forth and, and the states, the states actually, um, running the employment first for our county, but I don't know what they're doing, it, they made it, it's, it's a weird thing, because they made it mandatory.
I think they signed it, didn't they?
So, I'm not sure what they're doing with it, I haven't heard too much about it lately.
Alright, well, can we?
But once I know something, I'll let you know, because I haven't heard. Yeah, but I don't know, I don't know yet, so, oh, no, that's okay, you can.
We're running a little behind.
Oh, okay.
Run away by.
Well, we're moving right along, everything's fine, okay, really, I, everything looks, everything's fine, we're doing, we're doing okay, um.
I looked through, I didn't have any questions.
Yeah, and.
What little I know about it, but.
Okay, the first late payment came out the end of November, November twenty-seventh, and we had a hundred and thirty-four households on, last year, the November payment, we all had a hundred and fifteen, so, yeah, it's up, and so. And this month, I'm seeing a lot of people coming in, they're needing emergency services for propane, they're needing it for rent, they're needing it for a lot of things, uh, into the month type, into the, into the year, into the year thing, you know, I guess, but any, I, yeah, definitely this month, I have had more people in for emergency services than I've had for a while now. But, um, and like I said, yeah, it's crazy time for us right now because it's just been really busy since we've been back in. The month of December is always hard for redeterminations because when they put Obamacare in and people became eligible, the enrollment started in December. So, all these people come eligible, have to do a redetermination once a year, and it hits in December. So we have massive redeterminations, it's a busy time, and then Social Security does their, uh, update to their amount that they do, their COLA change update, that affects anybody that we have on that doesn't automatically update. It used to be we'd have ten fifteen, last year we had over fifty, so we have to go in and update all of those cases, besides trying to get all these redeterminations, it's like massive, massive amount in December, so if you see us somewhere all running around like this, you'll know why, we're trying to get this stuff done, it's not, yeah, and we've just had a lot of people applying and it's just been kinda chaotic like this. This first week of the December has been a little hectic in our department, so. Did you find what you were looking for, Jay?
You know, I, I think I read it wrong.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
I'm looking, I know where it was and it, it looks like.
Oh, okay, okay.
But thank you.
Okay.
How's your staffing, are you doing okay?
We're doing okay, I could, you know, even if I needed another person, I don't know where we would put them, we would have to have a table, which.
Have to take out the wall to make more.
Well, you would have to take out, and, and there are times like this month, I think, gosh, it would be nice to have a halftime person who could help us do this, but honestly, I, we don't have the room, I would love, love to have another halftime person in there, but I, I don't see how we could possibly do it.
Uh, we failed to get the certification of, I'm looking back at Ms. Kara.
I know.
I thought we had that under act, or under a possible action item on DHS this morning, but we do not, unless I'm looking at an old agenda, let me see, no, that's okay, we're gonna go ahead and do it anyway. That's okay, uh, 'cause I, I thought, well, maybe we moved it down to new business, but I didn't see it there either, so, yeah. Uh, so, we need to certify that the, uh, Custer County Human Services Department is hitting benchmarks, there's a document for it.
Have you seen that? You can, you can look at mine.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I saw that somewhere.
Yeah, it should have been with, yeah.
Uh, and so I spoke briefly this morning with Mr. Laura, or, yeah, Laura about that. And, uh, do it every year, it's kinda standard business, so.
It is standard business.
I would move that we certify Custer County Human Service, Human and Social Services Office, uh, to be in compliance with CDHS.
It's their, yeah, compliance for their county personnel and merit system.
For their training and all that. I'll say. Been moving to second to certify, uh, the certification of compliance for twenty twenty for, uh, DHS, discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose na, most of Kerry's, I think this just needs one signature for it.
I think so. I will.
Done.
Okay. Do you want the signed copy?
No.
Okay.
I've got an idea.
Do I even sign it?
I just think we need to put possible action item on all of them, then we don't have to worry about it, but.
Oh, that's a great idea, oh, see, I think that's a great idea. I have nothing to say about.
Yeah, right at the top.
Just thought I'd throw my.
Yeah, we, I would just put that right after.
Thank you, ma'am.
Put after the header.
Thank you. Anything else in your world?
What about our vehicle?
It's down, I should've asked Gary, I never thought about it, uh, down at Road and Bridge.
Okay.
They are refurbishing that.
Okay.
So, uh. I will follow up, let me make a note of that, follow up.
Okay, okay.
But we had our guy here and forgot to ask him.
Yeah, and I wasn't thinking about it either.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Have a good day today.
Alright, you too.
Thank you.
See you later, Laura.
Bye, Clint.
Goodbye.
So, uh, you don't know when you're gonna get your new table and you and Kelly can move it.
Oh, yeah, I'll, don't egg him on about that.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to.
By the time I'm ready to retire.
You're second to me, okay, he's got it, we got, yeah, okay.
Did you have their priorities straight?
That's right.
In budget time, we determined that I was just ahead of urinal cakes, toilet cake.
Oh!
Used. Hello, sir, how are you?
Well, good, okay.
Good morning, sir.
Good to see you.
Good morning, sir.
How's things in your world?
Moving right along, moving right along.
Good, thank you for your report.
I didn't know if you got that, I wanted to bring this as well, we talked about this for, uh, last week.
Yeah, yeah.
From last month, right?
Pardon?
Oh.
Last month.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is this the policy or is this what you're recommending?
This is what I'm recommending, um, I found a policy that was given to me, um, from two thousand and eight, ordinance number two thousand and eight dash two, I believe, um, recommending a twenty-five percent charge per page of the, uh, eight and a half by eleven, eight and a half by fourteen.
Right.
Um, and a one dollar color charge and a five dollar printing fee, that was before we had the new printer and that was also, you know, nine years old, so, um, based on those recommendations, I worked this up that you could. So, that was what I was proposing, wanted to bring to you, um, in regards to what we talked about.
Okay. Quick question, first hour of GIS and mapping?
Generally, that was, that's free because of the, because if, if we go through a core request, it's always free, so.
Right, but outside of the core request, if just somebody come in and wanted an hour of your time?
That, that's kind of the way it's been done, but we can change that if you, if that's your, if that's the prerogative, um, because if they went through the officials, official request and said, we need this done, then it would be an hour free, so.
Right, but.
The original ordinance was a twenty-three dollar an hour, um, uh, charge, and so I, I wrote about ten years ago, so raised that up to twenty-five.
Right, so I'll pick on my friend, Mr. Bogle, and let's say he came to you and said, hey, you know, I need a map of whatever, and it took you an hour, let's say exactly an hour.
Alright.
Does he as a non-county, non-entity, non-county entity person deserve an hour of your time at no cost?
I guess that would be the, your prerogative, we can, uh, what would you like to see?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I don't know.
How much of that kinda work do you get?
Not a lot.
Yeah. Uh, we certainly understand the first hour of core request, there's no charge for that, but I'm just saying, if somebody else walks in off the street and wants you to do an hour worth of their work.
Should we talk about then, um, formalizing a procedure for work for someone coming in off the street?
Right, and, um. To Bill's point. Would that happen very often?
About once a month.
Okay.
And usually, you know, most of these printing requests are off, stop. And usually, you know, most of these printing requests are off, stock the stuff that they already have, all they're doing is using the printer, right?
Right, that's, that's, uh, the, that fee schedule would be for people coming in from outside.
GIS and mapping.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a suggestion?
Mm-hmm.
Um, how about, for the last one, for public, non-county, non-safety? I mean, I, I don't want people driving up here from Pueblo to get mapping done for free because they don't wanna pay for it elsewhere. I think we oughta say twenty-five dollars an hour with a minimum of one hour. I, I just think that would be appropriate. And we shouldn't be providing this free for the public, I mean, they could go to Staples and get it done and pay a significant fee.
Except for core requests, that's covered all right.
Yeah, outside of core requests, but I was thinking, as a taxpayer now, do I have the, the right to access a county employee? I don't think so, but I don't know, I don't do your job, so I don't know what GIS and mapping work would look like.
This is why I brought it here, this is, this is not.
No, I appreciate what you did.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, I don't, if it's non-county related, if it's just an outsider, it's not for safety issue, I mean, it's not the fire department or the ambulance or something like that coming to you. Then I feel just an outsider should pay a fee like everybody else would.
So, what kinda work is it that they ask?
I go to Kelly's office and I file a piece of paper, I pay money.
So, so actually, this morning, I got a request from, uh, from the people at Kettle Camp for, because they received, uh, they had property damage from the Junkins' fire. And they would like a, they would like a map, a large plot map of, or, I mean, a large printed map of the, uh, damage from Junkin's fire. Showing, showing the area and overlay that with their, with their property so they can see how much exactly was damaged in that fire. Now, now, of course, for the map, um, that was the charge, but, and it would probably take more than an hour. It will, it'll definitely take more than an hour to line all that up and, and create a map because it's not something that's already existing.
Right, and if we really look at this and you say the plotter work for printing, these are the figures, ten, fifteen and twenty-five dollars, that's really for the plotter.
Right.
Right, that doesn't.
So, let's say somebody came in, we used to have a, uh, the, the subdivision or zoning map, somebody came in and said, "I need, I need this map." For research purposes or whatever, say, "Well, that's, that's gonna cost you X amount of money." Because it does, because, because it costs us money, it does, you know, it's expensive.
If you have to create a file to make that map, then I think that, that comes into play. If it's something you have, can I get a copy of the?
We have, we have ten, we have ten years of maps that already exist. Um, that are, that are pretty easy to draw from it.
Then I wouldn't think they'd have to pay the labor cost for that, just pay for the map because it's already done, right?
If that's.
Printing cost.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of the printing cost. But if some, if you had to do this GIS and mapping work by the hour.
That's.
Then I think Commissioner Prince's suggestion.
I believe that.
Yeah, I think your suggestion's a good one, twenty-five minimum.
Twenty-five minimum, but that buys you the first hour and twenty-five.
There we go.
After, you know, you could break it out, if it's an hour and a quarter, you could, you know, thirty dollars, whatever comes out of it.
Okay, understood.
Sounds reasonable to me, but.
That's what we do, so, we, you come in and you get a copy, we charge you twenty-five cents. But we have companies once in a while that request, um, a whole bunch of, like, past stuff, we want all your stuff back to nineteen sixty or something. And then we charge them because it takes a while to do that.
Understandable, yeah.
We're gonna charge them for that.
So, do you have a formalized process or do they have to go through a core request or what's their process there?
No, they usually just send us a request of what they want.
It wouldn't require a core request.
Yeah.
Okay.
Business request.
I see, okay, that's okay.
And we don't get them very often, but we do get them.
And I certainly don't have a problem you using discretion and say, "Well, it took me three minutes to pull up this file, I'm not gonna charge it for that." I, I'm good with that, I don't have a problem.
Alright.
But if we get into that, "Oh geez, yeah, this is gonna take some time," then I think they need to pay.
Like, you have to spin up an understanding, it takes you three quarters of an hour.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, perfect.
And the eleven by seventeens have always been a dollar fifty.
Oh, they have?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Did you get that thirty-five cents from somewhere?
No.
Or did, okay.
No.
So, they, the rest of us charge a dollar fifty.
Okay.
For eleven by seventeen.
I want you to check it, like, file it. Be normalized.
I'm sorry, that wasn't in the.
The actual charges here.
That wasn't in the document that I had.
Yeah, I think that when that ordinance was, um, when we did that ordinance was, uh, so, before the ordinance, when somebody would want a recorded copy, it was always a dollar twenty-five a page.
Okay.
And then they, um, the state came up with, they changed their laws to where we could only charge twenty-five cents a page.
Interesting.
And, um, a lot of the county clerks had a problem with that because those big books.
Right.
Um, they're bigger pages, they're harder to make copies of, you've got.
Just black and white, too.
Yeah, and so, they said, okay, um, each county can develop an ordinance that addresses that. And so, basically, that's what that ordinance addressed, was that if you have a larger copy out of those bigger books, we're gonna charge you a dollar twenty-five, but everything else, we have to charge you twenty-five by statute.
That's a resolution, not an ordinance.
Was it a resolution?
Well, I'm sure it would be an ordinance.
I think, yes, it was, uh, resolution two thousand and eight dash two. So, okay, I, I understand that, I, we, we can, that's why I was bringing it here, this is not, I wasn't trying to make policy.
Yeah.
I appreciate you doing that, great job, what you brought us.
No, and it's good to have a, cause that's what we have, so that you can look at it and see.
So, do we need a vote to accept this?
Uh, probably be appropriate, yes.
Or, or, or should I, should I make the changes that we talked about?
Why don't you make sure that it's consistent with the other charges everybody's doing besides that. And then give us the final approval.
Okay.
Perfect. Um, anything else on the report, gentlemen, did you have any questions?
No, I went to a, straightforward. Have you given any thought to the microphones in this room?
Oh.
Yes, indeed.
Glad you brought that up.
Um, I, I was the, uh.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
No, it isn't, okay.
Um, IT grant for the contraption system, I put together a, uh, really comprehensive system for this office and, uh, Tom came by and I gave it to him.
Yeah, but Dr. Sipper people at CCI, that grant.
Yeah, they've, I think it's already been applied for.
It's on here, I don't have it on my agenda.
It's tomorrow's.
Oh, tomorrow's.
Tomorrow's agenda, I don't have tomorrow's in front of me.
Yeah, I don't either, um.
So, so yes, I did do that research and created a comprehensive system. Did you want me to come back in tomorrow?
No.
Well, here's why, uh, there's nothing on tomorrow except that, basically. We're gonna, we got, we're behind already, do you wanna continue to get further behind?
No, I wasn't gonna.
I'll be the way, I just brought it up as you're sitting here.
Okay, gotcha.
It's nice to hear you got it, thought of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll report on that tomorrow.
Okay.
But I don't think it's necessary for you to be here.
Do you want me to send a spreadsheet showing what I, what I actually created for that?
Uh, I've got it, don't I?
I think you do, yes.
Let me check real quick. Yeah, he just sent it to me as I was working on the grant, so, uh, you can if you wanna send it to the commissioners, that'd be great.
Okay.
Wouldn't hurt, otherwise they'd have to listen to him longer.
Yeah, well, no, because what you're sending you is water over the bridge, it's already been submitted.
Gotcha.
On the grant?
Yes.
But you're gonna, you were gonna discuss it with us, you said, or just tell us what you said?
Yeah, the grant, I've got new information on the grant, so, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, sir, anything else?
Oh, I believe that's it.
Okay.
Very much done on that, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you for all you do.
I think your record should reflect that Chairman Flowers said Mr. Bogle's a non-entity.
Yeah, or, or other nonentities.
If I could get your notes.
And we're done with what?
Continuing to dig the hole.
We are, man. I'll, I'll work the backup, I'll send it back up, thank you.
Oh, boy. Um.
Why don't we get old good John and take a break after him? As possible.
Uh, I would think so.
Cause John's been here looking excited.
Um, DSO? Good morning, sir.
I will refrain from shaking your hands.
Oh, you still sneeze?
Not well.
Due to the fact that, uh, I think the flu shot has given me something.
Ah, okay, well, welcome, uh, sorry, not feeling well. You're a rock star in the whole county.
Well, I'm surviving on, uh, cold medicine and coffee and bad attitude, probably.
Well, you got a lot of compliments on, uh, on your food distribution efforts, man, man, man.
I didn't neglect to forward this letter from the VFW regarding, uh, my first, uh, action item. Um, the VFW has raised, uh, a total of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the holiday season. We paid, paid out two thousand dollars already, uh, for the Thanksgiving meal distribution that we did. Uh, we did, uh, just over one hundred meals, uh, that day. Um, we are planning on doing another one on December twenty-first, uh, at Lang Hall and we're gonna pay another two thousand dollars for the, um, one hundred meals.
December twenty-first?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, as I said, four thousand eight hundred and fifty right now and then now we have two thousand eight hundred and fifty for that meal. Any, uh, donations that we get above that will go into the Veterans Trust Fund to cover, uh, any lapses in payments from the state. Like, right now, I'm getting calls from, um, veterans asking whether or not we're gonna have money on Monday. It has not been deposited and we're already, uh, a week behind on doing Veterans Trust Fund distributions for that.
Got it.
Um, so, if, if the board is, is willing to donate anything, then that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I, you know, I'll jump, jump in there, I'll move, we donate a thousand dollars to the trust fund, these guys need some money, so.
I'll say.
Been moving second to donate a thousand dollars, my intent was, sorry, gentlemen, out of Community Outreach Fund, uh, if that's, if that's agreeable to your second. Been moving the second to donate a thousand dollars to, is, is that the correct wording, Veterans Trust Fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Out, able, out of.
Yeah, it has.
Veterans Trust Fund.
Everything on there on that letter as far as donation.
Um.
Appreciate that, gentlemen.
Out of, uh, Community Outreach, discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, who carries? Uh, we will give this letter to Ms. Kara and, uh, I'll just make a note on here. That was one of the most incredible things that, uh, that whole food thing is.
It's, it's really amazing and, uh, I've got more.
We get that Kelly article.
The next, next thing that I have, gentlemen, is, uh, the VFW is, is seeking, uh, one of the rooms in my basement in the annex, uh, to expand the food bank. Um, the American Legion has the two rooms on the west side of the basement. Um, I, my understanding is they have a twenty-year lease on those. Um, the American Legion Auxiliary has traditionally had the, uh, food bank storage downstairs, however, they've been struggling with membership and so, we've not been getting a lot of help with that. The VFW, however, is expanding greatly and would like to be able to make sure that we have a, uh, food storage area, we wanna build it properly, make sure it's up to, uh, uh, state requirements. Um, we can get those specs from John Gallegos, uh, cause he's been obviously doing this food bank stuff for a while. Um, they just wanna make sure that we're able to accommodate that.
Who has a twenty-year lease?
My understanding is it's the American Legion.
On the annex.
Basic.
I don't know where that is. We'll have to research that a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, that's just what I was told from the American Legion.
Could be right, just don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I, I've never seen the actual paperwork.
Keep turning up these skeletons everywhere.
It's okay.
It's okay.
I mean, right now, the basement is basically full of trash.
Okay, I'll be down there.
Does American Legion have anything?
Uh, the American Legion, uh, does have the one room that has uniform items and things like that, they use that on a regular basis. The other room is where most of my food storage is now, um, but it's, you know, like I said, I'm just not getting the help that I need as far as, uh, stocking that and things like that.
I have a couple of questions if I may. Do you have any idea what the cost would be to, first of all, is it your recommendation to go ahead and use the basement for the food storage?
I, I see no issue with it, um, I'm getting so much, and we're actually getting overwhelmed with the amount of food that we could get. We're gonna have to reach out to the churches and things like that to try to make sure that, I don't want my office to turn into the, you know, community food bank.
Right, you don't wanna be doing that.
Um, but I'm okay with it being a hub to be able to have another organization, um.
Take it and build this closer.
Um, because, I mean, like, the VFW, uh, told me yesterday, or actually, no, the E Clampis Vitis Group said that they have a semi-truck down in Penrose that they wanna bring to Custer County that is full of food. I can't handle that right now, you know, so.
Uh, did you say there was enough room?
There is enough.
To keep the trash out of there?
There is enough room, uh, mostly what's down there is just, you know, broken chairs and things like that. Um, I can work with Bill Hitt and get that all taken to the landfill and.
Would it be a cost of, of revamping the basement to all?
It'll all be through donations, we will have no, no cost out of our budget at all.
What's it gonna take to do shelves?
Basically, what we just need to do is just build shelves to spec, um, we need to make sure that the, the food is off the floor, uh, and a certain distance away from the wall and that's, that's it. And the fact that it's all dry storage, um, I don't really have any issue, you know, as far as we're not gonna be handling.
Perishables.
Perishables.
Canned goods and dry stuff.
And how do you guard against becoming the county food bank?
Um, I've been, been having to kind of reel in the VFW a little bit because they've been getting so many offers of donations. Um, I am standing firm on the only people that can come to me for donations are veterans.
Excellent.
Um.
And then are you working at all with Karen's Share?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful.
And I'm, we're, we're trying to see what we can do to augment them, um, cause I mean, if you walk into Karen's Share, I mean, they've got that wide open building and it's like five cans on the shelves. Um, you know, so if we can help augment them so that they can do more.
And let them come and get it and do it, that's fine.
Um, the other thing too is John Gallegos is proposing and he's gonna be talking to you, is he wants to do a monthly mobile food bank distribution.
Mentioned that.
Uh, and that would be ten months a year, uh, for five thousand dollars total. Um, which, I mean, the VFW is very close to being able to reach that, that goal already.
Okay, well, good. Excellent, well, I think by consensus, we support that as long as it doesn't get out of control and you, and, and certainly you have set the parameters that you're not gonna become county food bank, so.
You know, I, I have no issue, you know, especially with these holiday food items, you know, I wanna make sure that, you know, we, the community sees that the veteran community is.
Being taken care of.
Reaching out to, to everyone, uh, cause, you know, one of the main goals of the Veterans Trust Fund is to make sure that no one goes hungry. I mean, that mainly is for veterans, but during the holiday season.
Got some excess, then you deal with it.
I've got a lot right now, I mean.
There's no reason why they couldn't deliver it directly to their shelves either, I mean, get somebody.
And that's, that's what I wanna be able to make sure that we can do.
Don't get yourself in the middle.
Well, don't put it in the basement just to bring it back up.
Right, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Cool.
Okay, um, other than that.
Look at the report, looks good.
And then, uh, I will be leading the parade on Saturday.
You're gonna have to accept it sooner or later.
Yes, I will.
I'll go ahead and move that we accept the November two thousand nineteen, uh, Congress, uh, the Military Veterans Defense Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moving second to approve the report, the VSO, for November, for the discussion. Hearing none, we're broke, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, who carries?
Yeah, I'm very impressed with, uh, you know, the, the changes in the VFW. Um, they are definitely doing a lot for this community. I mean, we've got some new people that are, I don't know if any of you.
Have some energy.
Have met Peg Legg, but, uh, he is quite the, uh, interesting person as far as, uh, getting donations, so.
That's great, good, well, thank you, appreciate it, sir, I hope you're getting better.
We'll just wave goodbye.
Wait, 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 I've got a question about.
John, can you, can you speak to, or do you, do you know, so I know the Department, or Veterans Administration just has been releasing information that they're doing like a veterans something access. I E. Cars that they're gonna issue out so that veterans now have access to, um, the. so that veterans now have access to the P X or whatever you call it.
So the VA health card, basically, you can... There's a couple ways. The only way you can do it is to go online and go on to e-Benefits or one of the other VA websites and request an ID card. And then as a veteran, you can access any of the MWR facilities on base, things like that. I believe it is only for veterans with disability.
Take a little look.
Oh, sure, sure.
There are some...
Yes, people want to fight them.
No. Be a little weird.
Looks like they've got most of the stuff ironed out and I just saw the emails and stuff.
So you have to be 30% disability?
I'll blow a check on that one.
Any further... Yeah, I think I've got access to exchange right now and they're working to do similar for the commissary, but part of... There's issues of access to like Ford Cars and stuff like that. I know I'm on the retiree council of Ford Cars. That was... That came up in our last meeting and they're trying to work those details out.
Well, by consent, we will take a five-minute adjournment for recess. Being next up on our staff reports is Human Resource Finance. I have been biting my fingernails waiting for this moment.
Here comes the tree.
Man, you did.
But he's been busy. Good morning.
What we do... We owe the honor.
Is that like saying how much do we pay?
How much do we pay?
It's government. We pay and pay and pay right now.
Lots and lots of things.
Okay.
The handwritten...
Is this today when they sign off on the mill levies, the certification?
Uh, no, I don't have that yet. This is probably...
General fund we do, right?
But there's a certification form and those, I think JD, the deadline for him to have those things, or JD is the 10th, so we're just a little before. And that's what I actually submit to him on our behalf for that part.
But not the full countywide mill levy? Right, we're not doing that today.
And your next levy is the 18th, correct?
After tomorrow, but...
Right, I'm sorry. And I think I will have to be on the agenda for that certification. Hopefully I can... It's always... It's real hard to have that to be able to control.
We put certification of county mill levies on the agenda for the 18th under new business. Sheriff would entertain a motion pertaining to the handwritten checks for the amount of $43,983.20.
So I move that we approve the checks for $43,983.20. They would submit it this morning.
Oh, accepted. Second.
Moved in second to approve the hand-signed check for the amount of $43,983.20. Discussion?
Um, yes, I have.
Part of that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And next up, I have four resolutions.
We're still in the middle of the motion here, so we're just letting him have an opportunity to look at that real quick, sorry.
Sorry.
I don't know about this sheriff's thing. Oh, wait, that's the drangle. That's okay.
Uh, any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Mr. Kerry's. Go ahead, ma'am, I'll sign these while we talk.
Four resolutions. The first one is pertaining to the sheriff's vehicle that was totaled in there. The other three are mandatory by the state that go with the budget to the state, which I will be mailing in as soon as I get these signed. And I don't need the recorded copy, I just need a signed copy of the last one. The scanner next door doesn't scan very well, so I have copies of the originals. If those didn't come out very good, I'm not sure what copies you have of the...
They were a little faded, but plausible.
It's just funny how when it scans, it just lightens them up and so these were just a little nicer.
So you got something to set the mill levies here, that's where the next time...
It's for 20... It's for one, one of 20. And that's what I give to JD on behalf of the county while he's giving, you know, West Cliff, Silver Cliff all of those.
So we want to do that today?
Look at those.
Sure.
I have a question about that one. We get finished going through all this, about to know what it is.
So we'll save that until you've got all the rest of your stuff.
Not every day we get a write-in check to buy a sheriff's vehicle, is it?
He's not even appreciating all this.
He's back there playing Angry Bird or something.
I'm answering emails. Actually, it's been a little work.
That check isn't in here, though.
Well, he's actually...
It was mailed to his...
We went through that one.
Because it was...
Signed on our...
Yes, because it was like five bucks a day for the interest, so I carried it physically down there.
Spaced that out, but we haven't had that discussed.
Now let's move on.
Not like that was a great savings, or you could keep any of them. Like I'm making up to mail that to the...
Okay. All right, we got that taken care of, so we'll look at these. I know you were in discussion while I was signing.
You've got one, two, three, four resolutions that we want to approve now.
Yeah. Um... Yeah.
So this, the first one is...
So let's deal with these one at a time, obviously, because they're certainly different. Resolution 1915.
So you got that one up front?
Yes, because that's more of a housekeeping too, so we don't overspend the capital out like.
All right, so I move that we adopt Resolution 1915 to fund the fund balance for $34,963.58.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt Resolution 19-15, which basically says we will appropriate $34,963.58 to cover capital improvement or to go in to...
Add it.
Come out of capital improvement. Correct.
Correct.
Go to fund balance to offset the cost of the vehicle that we turned in for insurance claim. Further discussion? Or any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
So did the...
I'll vote aye, sorry. Yes.
So the insurance money came in and now it's going to pay for another vehicle?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
The $14,000 or $15,000 hit we take on it because the insurance didn't cover that. So where's that come out of? Does it come out of my question?
Guess what the hit was? It wasn't 14 or 15.
I thought it was like, wow.
It was originally.
It's like 16 or 17.
That was the original projection. It was less than four?
It was less than $2,900 overall. Except, I mean, you're out of a vehicle and you had made one lease payment.
Oh, so they ended up ponying it up more than the...
Yeah.
Good... That is Donna, big girl.
Yeah, so it was pretty close.
I don't mean that...
Donna knocked one over the fence for us there.
Great job.
Yeah, there you go.
Nice work, human.
Doesn't beg a question, though. I know that...
I'm not going to come give you a hug.
Private people that buy a car, you're upside down in it.
Right, exactly.
More they have an insurance.
That gap, yeah.
Policy on that gap insurance. We don't do that?
We do not.
Or we can't do that, is there a reason?
Well, and our premiums are really low for all the equipment and money we have.
We'll absorb that when they incur them.
So it was, yeah, it was not... It was a lot better than I had anticipated.
Okay.
Twenty nine... Twenty... Sorry. Resolution 19-16 deals with the budget itself, authorizing Ms. Donna to prepare and submit that on our behalf. Sheriff would entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve Resolution 19-16, adopting the 2020 budget.
I'll second it. It's been moved in second to adopt Resolution 19-16. Discussion?
Is it possible to get that on the electronic version? Do you have it scanned and all that?
I do. But Vernon has it with the exception of the signature page and when I get that, I'll give that to him and then it'll be ready to go. But he just can't post until I have his signature.
So this is the formal adoption of what we've already...
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. We'll be there, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion, Kerry's. We will... Thank you for doing all this work. My gosh. And Resolution 1917, levying the property taxes for 2020, setting the mills based on $109,773,510 for a total of 19.906 mills. I would move that we adopt Resolution 1917.
I'll second it.
Been moving in second for the adoption of Resolution 1917. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Contingent fund, there's no mill for that. Has that always been that way?
It is. For years and years, we have not put money in. In 2015, I believe, we set up maybe a half mill and then it went away.
Was there a timeline on it?
It's just... It's more of a savings account that if we have a year that we have a little more money that you would make that. And then it just sits in there. I think there's $118,000 in that contingency fund.
So how do these mills for 2020 compare with, for example, 2019? Are they basically the same or are they...
Last year it was 20.045, I believe. Not positive on that number, but it's close.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have it.
And so our mill levy dropped, but with an explanation, is our property tax increased to our assessed valuation went to 109 from 100.
Right.
So that put us over the 5.5% limit. And so I get a worksheet that shows that that did, which is why the general fund had to change its mill levy, but we actually garnered more tax even with the smaller...
So this is roughly 20, it looks like, mills?
Yeah, 19.906.
And I think it was...
Roughly 20.
Yeah, on there. But that's... But it did change, you're absolutely correct. But it... We actually received more money even with the change because the assessed valuation had went up so much.
Thank you, I understand.
Further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Kerry's.
So this next one is a general, right?
And that's the appropriations. That's what ultimately that each fund is a breakout for the state.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a shortcut that way they don't have to look at each budget line.
Yeah, and that's how that other one came through.
Okay, yeah, it was kind of, yeah, just a little... I could see it was a little bit different.
That scanned kind of squirrely.
Yeah, it was just a tiny bit different, so.
So this is just certifying basically that the appropriations are what we looked at before.
And that is exactly what you have deemed appropriate to spend for 2020.
That was our total budget.
So I move we adopt Resolution 1918.
So second?
I'll second.
Moving in second for the adoption of Resolution 1918, appropriating the sums of money to the various funds as set forth in the budget. Discussion for... Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion, Kerry's. How could I ask such a question? We just voted on that, correct? And we don't need to re-vote on this because we just did, so.
She's there. Okay, that wore me out on that one.
And then down to...
No, it's chairman, vice chairman, pee on.
They're all the same.
They pee on.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know. I didn't know.
Depends if you have a puppy or not.
Okay, that one is done, yes. Let you look at it to make sure, but...
Do you want a hard copy this way or just to do the online once I get it?
If you have it already printed, I'll take a hard copy because I put it in a loosely binder.
And I did just, because I need them for the state, I need for Sam D'Nardo, for Kelly has to have the copy and then you guys, so you...
I'll put mine in a notebook here, Jay, and me in file, if that's okay. That one's done.
Actually, there's yours, Kel.
Yeah, I moved that we amend the budget.
Let me go get another supplement off of this, start going from there.
So we got here to...
Yeah, let's check the page and make sure.
Bill, do you need more coffee? Oh, but you could send out...
He can multitask.
You could send out... That for pizza? You haven't even gotten...
No. Done too, you look hard on it.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Or just the online or both?
Both.
And Donna, do you want copies of all four of these? Just copies or recorded?
Just copies will suffice for me and then I can get the recorded ones later for the official... The state doesn't require them to be recorded, they just need them to be...
Okay.
So you want a copy, please. Okay, we'll give you a cover. Or do you want... Can we just sign that one?
No.
I didn't know if you did or didn't. I couldn't just...
Sign it?
Uh, wanted to...
Oh, did I wrong on that?
Yes. I know, I couldn't...
I would really like one of that.
Yep, no, absolutely, you're good.
Okay, thank you so much.
I just didn't want to make more than what I really...
And I didn't want you to make an extra copy because I usually use the one online.
Yeah, I'm down with these.
Was it one of these? Oh, there it is.
See, this is a copy I'll keep here.
How'd that get missed?
It didn't. It's my copy. I'll put it in the...
Oh, it's now here.
I'll put it in the notebook. I'll keep it here in the commissioner's room so you guys don't have to pack yours.
Thank you for doing my light.
Which light, where?
Outside, that dark skies did get by and you light up.
Dark skies paid for your light.
Light, yeah, and it was on the outside.
No, we haven't done the rest.
On there, at least, but mine was done. So I appreciate that, but thank you.
Anything else, ma'am?
Can I bring up...
Sure, you may.
All right, because I... We're talking about certifying the mill levy for next year.
Yes.
All the taxing entities, send it to JD, make sure it's all Tabor and Gallagher, you[1766.91] Make sure it's all Tabor and Gallagher, you know, legal. And then he goes to Donna. And my question is about the hospital. The hospital district has a 4.098 mill levy. And then the taxpayers voted in a separate mill levy for the ambulance or EMS. And it was specifically designated that way when they voted.
Correct.
But they always certify it as one mill levy, too. 7.098, I think, is the number. And I really question, since it's a separate mill levy that was voted on separately, it just, it seems to me, and I'm not an expert on this, that it ought to be certified as two separate mill levies to you.
And for some reason, this has came up before. And in my mind, you're correct. But I think it was the hospital district that was the proponent of that mill levy so it passed through them so that they put it together. I mean, I don't think it was anything far as, I think it just, that's how it went. But I don't honestly know that and I don't know who I would ask.
Well, probably Sam Donardo. But I mean, he's seen that and I guess he's never challenged it. My, the reason I'm bringing this up, and this is just an observation at this point, certainly not something to consider. But if during the discussions and negotiations about ongoing ambulance service in the future, if we're at an impasse, the final say is the commissioners. You know, they have their mill levy, are going to have it approved for 2020. But if, you know, if it's all in together, if it's a separate certified mill levy, then as a last resort, the commissioners should choose not to recertify that mill levy, in which case the ambulance or the hospital district wouldn't have the funds, you know, to continue operating. And I'm just throwing that out. But by having it together, it's kind of protected. You know, you can't, you know, deny one without denying the whole thing. And I don't think, I've never heard of this becoming an issue. Generally, mill levies are just routinely approved as long as they meet the statutory requirements. But it's something ultimately that the commissioners can say, no, we don't think you're providing the service that you're getting the mill levy for and we're not going to certify it.
And that's why we certify them, right? That's why they go through this process.
Right. So I'm just putting that out on the table there for your consideration as we go forward, trying to work out a solution with the hospital district about service for the entire county. But if they really don't want to do it outside the boundaries of the hospital district, then, you know, it's possible that the ultimate resolution would be that the county says, we're going to take back. Because right now, it's by a contract between the county and the hospital district. And if you decide you want to take that back for breach of contract or whatever reason, then that mill levy would have to go away. And that would be one way for it to go away. Of course, the county would have to have it simultaneously, be asking for its own mill levy for 2021 if that's where we're headed.
Do you want to pursue that with Sam or you want to...
Well, and I was wondering if the question, if it says that the West Custer County Hospital District is requesting a 2% mill levy increase for hospital, then that's exactly why it went the way it did. I mean, that's what I'm going to say is probably the question, ask it that way. And so how do we not have it that way? I mean, I don't know that, but I would have to get a...
Three mills, four's providing ambulance service.
Exclusively.
Right.
But if it, but if it was the West Custer Hospital, you know, not four and like when you did a road and bridge increase, it's the board of county commissioners requesting a mill levy increase for road and bridge.
Right.
And so it's separated.
This was from the West Custer County Hospital District.
Just four. And so that's, and so it, I don't, I mean, so that's why it's combined, I would think.
Right, it's the same entity doing two mill levies.
On there, and so I don't know...
Will you follow up with Sam about that, ask him what he thinks?
Because that seems that, you know, does it have to go back to the voters to separate? Or can somebody request that it be separated?
Well, yeah, should we be, should we be certifying 7.098? Or should we be certifying 4.098 and 3.0?
I think it should be separate.
That's the question.
I mean, that's what you guys do and that would be my ideal. But I don't know why. Well, then I have a question. If you did not okay that, what happens to the money? Does the treasurer just not write them the check and we hold on to it until the voters get rid of that? Or I, just a curiosity if that goes to...
Well, you're talking about...
You know, that the mill levy went because if it was a voter, can we not, can we, I mean, you're...
If the mill levy wasn't going to be, let's say, just for purposes of this discussion, you didn't certify that 3.0. You said we're only going to certify 4.098. And then they aren't going to have the mill levy.
So then it wouldn't be collected on, but it is a... But since voters voted for that, can we do that? That's my question.
Yeah, well, you can ask Sam that too, but why else would we be certifying these mill levies? The only other thing would be we're certifying that they're correct.
On there, right, and that's...
And that may be it. I don't know.
And I don't know either the answer to that. That's the only way that I see a mill levy. Generally, a mill levy goes away because the taxing district is going away. Here, they've got, this taxing district, the hospital district, has two separate mill levies.
Right.
So, you know, it's not, the hospital district mill levy would go away if they dissolved it. They said, we're just going to, you know, merge into Heart of the Rockies and we don't need our separate district anymore.
That would only be that four mills. And the three is still there, which would be...
Well, but we can't just transfer that over to us.
No, we'd have to, we'd have to.
There could be some kind of an agreement that any money that's there would go into the general fund.
And then we'd have to start and probably resolve a new mill levy.
The county would have to have its own mill levy if it's going to provide ambulance service in the future. But I just wanted to bring that up for your consideration.
So first off, can we not sign? Can we still collect if not for them?
Can we require the hospital district to certify as two separate mills?
Can they separate them?
And if they do, because I think it's always been certified in the past.
It always comes through because the treasurer writes the checks to them on the collection.
So not, I wouldn't think the question would be, can we not sign them? I think the question is what, what would happen if the commissioners didn't sign those?
And if it changes, you know, if they give that to JD, because that's what he puts on the computer so that it generates the tax bills with that amount. I know, I just...
And you can't, obviously can't do it this year because suddenly we're getting money to pay for ambulance.
Certainly we've got a lot of work I did between now and the next year.
But I just, I was curious about that part. And also, I mean, apparently it all goes in. And I'm not sure, but the hospital district just has one account. All the money goes in there.
I've always felt that it should be separate as well, that I could look at this one or this one and say what exactly was there. I've went to a few of the meetings and said that and...
Another question for Sam, probably, but...
But if it is their mill levy for that, then...
So who does their books, not Sam?
He is their auditor, but it's Teresa and Lisa, I believe, or...
Yeah, Teresa's the CFO. Sam's their auditor and maybe you can ask him that.
That's why I think he will, yeah, that he'll know that it was...
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, ma'am. Really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
On there.
All right, it's about time.
No, I got a bunch of unfinished business. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Glad to have that done. Gentlemen, any unfinished business?
Negative.
Move on to new business. Consideration of the economic development regarding the implementation of the strategic plan. Good morning, sir. Thank you for waiting. I have the subject you know.
My hands are reasonably clean.
I've asked Kara to start staff reports at 9:30 on our agenda instead of...
9:15, with a little optimistic.
In a review of the status of what we had, I think I was to give a recommendation as to how we might go forward. And I've consulted with Cheryl Trent, who got us up to this point. And I did get a copy of the implementation status board.
The appendix?
Yeah. The thing about it is, it appears that as long as, since it's been dormant for as long as it has, it's a matter of kind of refreshing and reassigning identification of points of contact for the various ideas. And then it would be suggested that at least a quarterly meeting would be conducted to status and report to the community. That's the short version. It's going to take, take, you know, there's still some holes as far as points of contact and such that need to be filled. And the ones that had been previously designated also need to be confirmed.
Reconfirmed.
My further suggestion is that we contract, and I say we, the county, and actually, when you look at it, there's some involvement of both towns too in a number of items. But I would suggest that a contract would be appropriate with Cheryl Trent to give coverage for these quarterly meetings for the year of 2020. And she has given an estimate of $20,000, or excuse me, $10,000 to conduct those four meetings and the necessary coordination. And the only thing as it relates that would be not covered in that is if we had to pay rents for a meeting room and such like that to Genuca. In the discussion, she also looked at depending upon the various varied tasks that are within it, if there was necessary for additional help from various functions, which might be absorbed within the function or not. She gave, provided estimates, which the bottom line and are not included in the quarterly meetings for a year, but some other $55,000 approximately in potentially other tasks that she could accommodate. But that wouldn't necessarily be associated with the basic funding. I mean, like coverage with tourism board task and such like that that were involved.
So restated, Charles, you got 10K for quarterly meetings?
Yes.
You got 5K, is that what you're saying?
Actually, if you take another half a dozen items that she detailed. And like one was marketing and promotion of Custer County. It should include jobs, events, et cetera, with the tourism board. And again, it's not knowing what progress has been made by the various identified functions. But, you know, as a matter of full disclosure, they totally are.
So what you're trying to say is that she thinks it's going to cost her $5,000 to interact with these people that are part of the implementation ease? Is that right?
No, no, excuse me. The basic, what I'm asking for funding, the others' information, really. $10,000, she'll cover quarterly meetings and progress and, you know, push the various other organizations that are points of contacts. What she did give as a matter of full disclosure, she gave me two, four, six items that were identified as tasks, not knowing what the responsible agency's done. But if she was to assume working with those, it could be as much as another $5,000.
That's what I meant, that that was what was going to cost her to go get involved with them to get them going and summarize.
Still haven't heard the number.
The number is $55,000?
Roughly. But that, again, I think the key thing is, right now, is the $10,000 for the quarterly meetings.
So do we know who those six guys, six responsible people are or agencies?
Yeah. She details that, who...
Why wouldn't we have somebody assigned by each one of those as the guy that would report to us, that would be responsible for doing it? Why do we need Cheryl to do that?
We would. She just gave that as an alternative.
Because that's how I viewed it.
Now, I can't find that document. I've been looking for it while you were talking.
I couldn't find it.
I just got it. Oh, the annex or the appendix?
I've been, I've had Kara looking for it for weeks.
Well, Cheryl sent this direct to me and I can send it to you. One of the problems, it's set up for 11/18, like we were talking about. And my printer at home doesn't accommodate that, but...
Well, let's talk in general for just a second here. Because I, Jay, I like the idea. You brought it up and that we need to, you know, and I'm a big advocate for the strategic plan and an implementation plan that you ride herd on. It's not going to sit in somebody's safe. So this is a good thing to do. And Cheryl, and I don't, we need to talk about the two pieces. It's, is it, we want to get Cheryl involved quarterly. I think quarterly is the right answer. We have to have, and that's what was the intent when we had our discussions originally, to sit in front of us, give us a status and how they're progressing and working together on things that are interconnected. You know, one item like that might involve the city of West Cliff, the other one in conjunction with RIT or whatever it is. And then we can help, and our job then is to help make it possible and facilitate the support to have these organizations be successful. Whether that means putting people together, advertising, or maybe in some cases, ponying up some cash if it is deemed the right thing to do. So I think personally that... I don't know that we need somebody to facilitate the meeting necessarily. I think we need somebody to help gather up the herd, the cats.
Well, I think the meeting is...
Is that what, she's viewing that as that?
Yeah. I mean, it would be, I would envision is that the responsible people at these meetings would come and report their status and their progress. And then between the meetings, it's somebody to kind of push them to...
No, I, that's very valid and that's been my experience in the strategic plans and implementation plans that I've been accountable for in the past in organizations. And we usually had somebody riding herd. It usually was the chief of staff or somebody that it fell under. And each organization would, we would be prodding them along and I think that's fine. We got to decide whether we want to maybe find some, it's either a county employee doing that or we hire Cheryl to do that. And that's maybe the discussion that we need to have.
If one may, the discussion I brought up when we started this was, I was concerned that the commissioners would not... Be, would not follow all the documents that need to be followed on the strategic plan to make sure it gets done, it gets followed. You know, I spoke, Charles, and you said that economic development would entertain the discussion of, I'm saying you would do it, would entertain the discussion of taking over the implementation of the strategic plan. That made a lot of sense to me because we have so much on our plate that I'm telling you, I will tell you for me, the strategic plan would be on the back burner. How important it is, I know. But if I'm fighting a fire here and doing this and doing that, the strategic plan's just kind of smoldering back there. But if I had some professionals who were going to do it, to me, it makes sense to ask economic development, if they're interested in doing it, to take over the implementation of the plan. They recommend, I mean, it's still our responsibility, but they would take over the day-to-day operation of that.
What is that day-to-day?
And then if that, if that would include Cheryl coming for four meetings or more, I'm certainly open to discussion. But I'm just concerned that the three of us implementing the plan, the plan's going to end up in this bottom drawer with the other plans that we have.
We're saying the same thing, I believe, Jay. You're absolutely right. And I'm an advocate for that. We don't have the time to individually do that. And that's what I said, usually to have somebody in the organization riding herd on that. But we are implementing it by, you know, by the authority. We have the authority to execute that, is all I'm saying. I don't mind whether it's Charles or whether it's Cheryl or the combination. If Charles is going to do it, you're going to have a price. It's not free.
I'm proposing that economic development unilaterally should not support it. We've got enough things on our table.
That's why.
To the extent, and I think Cheryl proved her worth.
She did.
During last year's, and she, the good news is the continuity of working with the three communities and such last year, you know, opposed to bringing in another third party or something.
And that's not a bad thing because it's a subcontract or a contract with us directly. That's okay. And she would be accountable to do that.
So what is it that you're, I'm missing the bottom line, what? I'm suggesting that consideration should be given for funding Cheryl for the basic $10,000 to support and conduct four quarterly meetings during 2020. Okay. And with economic development, how would you be involved in this process? We could, we could help manage that.
There are, from what I see, their interest in, I mean, there are some areas you guys have a dog in the fight to help do, like...
We have a dog in the fight in everything.
Right.
I mean, whether, whether it's accepted or not, we, we're interested in the economic.
But they are not acting as the county, they're acting as, it would be a contract with us to go implement the plan. So, and I don't know, is that going to cost us, Charles, if that's, if you're going to manage it?
You know.
Well, he just said they didn't want to manage it.
He just said he.
Well, there's a degree of coordination that I think is part and parcel with, with Cheryl working with Cheryl. That, that needs to be done, and there is certain parts, you know, scheduling, room availability, advertising, that's a local function that, that is certainly necessary for the accomplishment of it.
Well, the thing that, that I have this concern about, we get Cheryl down, and we have the organizations here, and you're going to do this, and you're going to do that to the different organizations, and this is what the plan is, and you're going to execute this. Who's going to ride herd over that? That's what, I mean, somebody needs to be, kind of like, we have all our departments come in front of us to tell us what they're up to, what they did from last month to this month. But the strategic plan, Cheryl coming down and facilitating, well, tourism is for one, you need to be working on this project. And who's going to, who's going to oversee that? Who's going to watch to make sure that those things are done?
My interpretation, what he said, Jay, and he can correct me, that's Cheryl's ten thousand dollars. She's not going to get paid ten thousand dollars to come up here for a meeting once a quarter. She would have to coordinate, and she did it with our strategic plan. She actually made the appointments for the.
So is that correct that Cheryl will then be?
She'd be the principal.
The coordinator of the process for approximate ten thousand dollar fee, which would include four meetings and the ongoing.
Coordination to make it happen.
Is that right?
I believe so. Not to the extent that a detailed statement.
Not, that's the way it should be.
Well, I understand, but that's not the way I understood it. And I may, it's probably me not interpreting what you were saying properly. I'm not saying anything wrong. You can answer that if you want. Maybe the pizza guy, who knows?
Well, here's my perspective. We better dust off a place on the shelf or make another slot in that file cabinet. I won't support spending sixty-five thousand dollars to implement this strategic plan.
Don't, please, please.
Ten thousand is what it is.
Pull that off the table.
Good. Consider it pulled off for me.
Well, what she said was, she was looking at what she interpreted the tasking of various points of contact, various functions. And it was, if these people aren't doing it, and, and those organizations hear what it would cost her projection to do that. So I think appropriate confirmation is ten thousand.
He's a hundred percent right. The bottom line with me, too, is that's the reason you have those other organizations that own those pieces. They're accountable for it. And, and if it's by them volunteering to do things, things that get coordinated together, that's how it should be, or paid for by however they, they think we raise, whatever. The ten thousand dollars, somebody needs to perform the function of making sure that they're sending out the emails, they're coordinating it, they're working with these people so that those actions are either being accounted for or being reported, so that we have the ability to build the fire under them if they need the fire, or, or it does sit in the closet.
And I think if, on any particular item, if we can't get a responsible point of contact that will follow up on it, then obviously, the community has not got interest enough.
That's right. You say, you guys wanted to do this, this was your plan, you developed it, that was your item, it wasn't something the commissioners invented, and, and they ought to own it. And from what I've seen, there is enough people that were interested in doing that. I think that that's just a, you know, a prod from, it's like any other organization that you get volunteers to do, somebody has to continually prod them.
So the last time we met, if I understand this correctly, you had said that you would consider taking the lead on this. That has changed. You're saying probably not going to take the lead on this.
I'm suggesting that the economic development would, you know, from an oversight situation, we would coordinate the.
Work with Cheryl.
Working with Cheryl.
I don't know why we would need that, but.
If you would be the county's contact with Cheryl to get this process working?
Yes.
Thank you. That's where I was at, point as well I was missing.
I mean, I've, I've had a dialogue with Cheryl for, gosh, it was almost six years now, and, and getting the grant, trying to get it before and stuff like that. So we've got a good working relationship and, and to that extent. But, you know, on the, the detailed work, we just, our capabilities with an economic development are certainly not.
So what would you envision you're doing to do that? You're just going to talk to her on the phone once in a while?
Well, and, and get the feedback from her, and then relate it and turn to you all.
Well, that's just to be in the middle man, and that, I don't, I don't know, that doesn't make sense.
That's where I'm going to come from.
She can, as we've done in the past, it went pretty well.
If you want to do it.
I don't, I do not.
Go right ahead.
I think it's a good idea that we need somebody, but it would usually be a county employee, I would think. If we don't need that, I'm, I'm good with Charles being.
Which county?
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. Right now, when we did the strategic plan, I did it. I'm not suggesting that I should be one Cheryl does do, but I do think that, that if Charles wants to do that, it's going to take some time to do it right. And is it going to cost us anything to do that?
Well. I had best to keep my mouth shut right now because I've got some thoughts that would probably derail this conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. If it's anywhere near sixty-five grand, it will.
No, forget about, I'm sorry, I, I tried to relate that in the right context, and if I don't, I apologize.
And I took it out of context, how's that?
But I, but I think it does reflect, one thing is, for, for us, community, for us to, to do these things, there is effort to do it right. And I think we all respect Cheryl's opinion of what the task would be, and it does put a degree of order of magnitude of what the effort is, whether it's volunteer, paid for, or whatever, to, to pull off some of these things.
If I could speak just for a minute, we spent a lot of money developing this plan as to the two towns, but that's not on that table right now. I think it would be a total waste of our taxpayers' money to not follow up, not have a professional follow up, whether it's you or it's Cheryl or whomever. It's not going to be me because I don't understand it. I mean, I got to know what the plan says, as far as implementing it, I don't know. So I think it would be a terrible waste of money, time, and effort that went into developing the plan without the proper follow up. And I think what you're suggesting is having Cheryl for, and it seems like a very nominal fee to me, to help get this plan moving forward and not become a dust collector and a waste of cash like so many previous ones have been. This really makes sense to me. My question, we just signed the budget this morning. Is there, is there money available in a grant? Or is this something we're going to have to find somewhere, ten grand somewhere to take care of this?
Depends on how soon we want to, to implement it, and we've already eaten time, and all of this takes time.
We need to implement it ASAP, the longer we wait, the less, the less this plan stays prime and effective and ready to go.
Mr. Kennedy?
I agree. Again, we need an implementation plan, we've got it. And actually, we've been tracking to it. If you look at the implementation, the items there, we're working on broadband, we're doing lots of things that are there. It needs structure. And the structure comes when you get somebody like Cheryl, who is going to coordinate the organizations that signed up on the dotted line that they're going to go do X, Y, and Z. That we've already established. And also, you need to modify that as time goes as well. It's important to get in front of us. The contract is with us, not with Charles, through Charles to do. We can, we're going to contract with Cheryl because it's our money and it's our authority. And, and we can ask her to coordinate things with Charles and have him help, I think that's fine. But, but she is going to be the professional we're going to hire to make sure that she's, we're getting the people together. I think that's a great thing.
Where are you done? Where's the money going to come from?
And now, so therefore, where does the money come from? And what, can we do it in ten, in twenty-five hundred dollar chunks? Or, or do we have to pay the whole thing upfront? We, we need to work the details of a contract out. Are we willing to do that is the first question. You know, and I think you made a good case that neither Tom, the hire, you have the time to, to do it personally. But we still need a lead. So, we end the discussion, my part of that right now.
Well, I would think if you want further discussion, which I guess it merits further discussion, we'll put it on the agenda and move on.
Let's do that.
We've taken Mr. Bobel's suggestions, direction. I don't know what else we can ask from him at this point.
I agree. I, I appreciate you taking this to this point. We were sitting here right this minute because.
It helps.
Before you got involved with her, we were nowhere. Okay? So at least we're walking towards an implementation. Would it make sense at this point to ask Cheryl to give us a proposal? Let us evaluate that. I feel very comfortable with economic development being the conduit between the county and the implementation process. I'm fine with that. I'm not speaking for my fellow commissioners, but I'm good with that. I just want to see it moving forward. I just don't want to throw away all that money.
That's certainly a mutual goal. We've raised expectations within the community. We did have a lot of involvement. And I think, you know, collectively, I've said in various meetings to various folks, it's the first time that the three governments in, in this county have come up with this comprehensive, a long-term plan economically as, you know.
And they tie their own strategic plans into it.
Yeah, and there's, there's certainly still points of coordination that are, that were identified and need follow up.
And we do need more than just bringing it to a commissioners' meeting and saying, hey, we're here. We need actual community involvement, which is what she's proposing, and actually get the implementation people together in a room to do that. And somebody needs to coordinate, and that's, Jay, you made a good point. That's her, that would be what she would be doing to do that. So do we want to execute this in another meeting?
I think so.
Let's get.
To, let's, let's, let's ask if we could.
Let's get her to.
Charles would follow up with Cheryl, if you would be happy to, if you would do that for us, I'd appreciate it. Ask her to either give us a synopsis and even a contract if she wants to, laying out what we're going to be getting, what the total cost would be. I understand there may be add-ons that she could do if we chose to do it.
Options.
It's fine to look at that. I mean, do we want pepperoni on the pizza or not? Do we pay extra? I get it. That's not a problem. So I would say, let's agree with the three of us, let's keep this ball rolling. It's, Charles got it rolling, let's keep it going.
And I know Cheryl has a concept of what, what we intend, and I know she has the, we've discussed that at length with her, so she, I'm comfortable with her coming back with a proposal.
Is that consensus that we could ask Cheryl to do that?
Well, I think we move forward, yeah, I don't.
We, we got to get.
If I buy into the whole ten grand thing, but.
No, I didn't say I bought into it either.
You can have a conversation about that.
Got to look at the details.
Question, ma'am?
Is, is this going to include the two towns, or is the county going to pay? I mean, isn't the two towns?
We talked about the county.
It's as far as the county plan affects the towns, Jackie, and then the tie-in would be them.
So the meetings will not include the town?
I would certainly think they would.
It does, because they're in, in our plan.
I don't anticipate them bearing any financial burden.
I don't know. We haven't asked.
I said I anticipate that, I didn't say it wouldn't.
Well, apparently, from conversations, she's got some follow-up task with both towns.
Right.
So.
That they're paying for.
That they're paying for. So as part of their efforts.
See, so to the concept, now maybe I'm not stating it clearly enough, that there are, if there are items on our strategic plan that do involve the towns and they had the input and helping develop it for us, they will have to be here to help the county plan. And they ought to be getting that back into their side of their plans that she's working for them and being paid for by them.
So she's just working separately at this point with the towns?
Right.
On their strategic plans?
She did that each.
And charging them?
They hired her to do.
They hired her.
Their, whatever they.
And, and I think, I think to characterize it, there's, how I've characterized it, there's a umbrella plan for the whole county inclusive, including the two towns, and then there's a more detailed implementation between each town.
That's correct.
That they hired and contacted for her separately.
And they actually finished theirs up in September or sometime.
But she's, I know she told me she's planned, she's got plans after the first of the year to visit both, both towns, so.
And it's really fortunate that she did each town, wasn't a separate contract.
Yeah. I mean, there's certainly some continuity. I'll, I'll seek a detailed contract with a statement of work, and I don't know how long that'll take. I can't imagine, but as soon as it's available, I'll relate it.
When you shoot me an email, we'll put her back on the agenda, put it back on the agenda.
Kind of related, but stretching it, and it's not on the agenda. But I did send each of y'all a copy last night. As y'all know, in 2020, we've got a census, and it does affect economic aspect of what Beth Lance said, of what the impact is, and to the fact that apparently, there's a deficit organizationally. And I did send it not only to the three of y'all, but to each of the two mayors, because it had indicated that, maybe it hadn't gotten to them, but they were talking about a, a committee. And, and part of the thing which I thought was quite enlightening is that we had like a twenty-six point five percent under count in the 2010 election, and that has a direct relationship on governmental subsidies and all. It means money.
Do you remember the number?
It's in the message, yeah. The, she, what she said was that in the 2010 census, there was a twenty-six point five percent under count. And she projected that with a current population of forty-eight hundred and seventy-three over the life of, between the 2020 and the 2030 census, that could mean as much as seven, in excess of seventeen million dollars.
That was for seven hundred and seventy persons that got missed.
Yeah. And one of the.
Over a ten-year period.
Over a ten, well, yeah, talking, you know, one point seven mill plus a year. One of the other things that will be important to us is in, not the general census, but on the long form, I understand, there will be a veteran count this year. And that certainly affects the support that the VSO gets and, and a lot of other things as far as qualifying, because the, you know, the 2010 census said twenty percent of the population in this county were veterans. And some of us would suggest that it's larger than that now because of the ones of us that have moved in here since 2010. And so to have some emphasis from the, from the governmental agencies, and, and there is apparently a, a need still for a committee, and I would assume a committee of citizens that would certainly help get the word out and such, to be, to participate in the census.
So how, would you propose the emphasis be done, Charles?
I don't know, but I know Beth and the COG have got, there's, she indicated there's resources, and if we want.
People go door to door and.
That's part of it. And one of the things, they're offering, they're offering jobs that.
Right. There's money to pay.
Yeah, there's, there's not bad part-time jobs.
Twenty bucks a day.
Yeah.
Good, thanks.
But, but it hasn't, I mean, I've been on the circulation for a number of months. I'm sure Beth could come down or, or one of the staff there and come down if we wanted to have a workshop on, on how it might be best supported. But I think from a long, from a near term and a long term, it's a benefit to, to us to, to support that effort, because obviously, it only happens every ten years.
Another great opportunity to collaborate with the two towns.
And like I say, I sent the same message to, to both Steve and them, so, and Paul, so I.
Okay.
Now's the time to do something on that.
All right, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for your patience.
Yep, thanks a lot.
Next item of business, consideration of a, I know the word temporary came along somewhere, contract with free comp. Sheriff Barney, would you like to come up and have a roundtable discussion, including council and?
Temporary is the word I inserted because this sort of tied him over. They've been operating on.
Thank you, Charles. Thanks for your waiting.
Thanks for your patience and your phone to be able to.
Just push my hand.
You doing all right?
I'm doing fine.
How are you going?
Good. So, are you going to use this table and just add-on to it, or are you doing a whole new?
I actually had that conversation, but I think now we're going to do a new one.
It's too bad he couldn't use that old end cut one that's over there at the, in the wood shop that they pulled out of the sheriff's office. It's that old, that's similar to the, it matches the wood in the quartz. Has that end cut oak?
Had that conversation as well. Went and looked at it.
It's pretty. It's a lot prettier than this thing.
Yeah. It's, it's a little longer than this, but it's got issues for what we were thinking. But I'll go look again, but I just went over there last week and.
No, I just, it's too bad he couldn't use it as well, so.
So, let's see. Why can't I find it now that we're here?
Do you, do you have it?
What are we looking for?
Kara, that agreement that I sent you, can you forward it to them?
I thought.
I had it. I don't know what I did with it. It's very weird.
Yeah, I'll do it again right now.
The whole agreement?
Yeah, it's only a couple pages, two or three pages.
Well, that's very strange. Unless I put it on December the 6th by mistake.
Who sent it to who?
Sent an email from this morning.
It was this morning, because I was waiting to hear from Shannon, and so I had not sent anything yet. But I just sent it.
At 9:22?
Sending it to y'all again.
This morning, 8:22, it was the time, came in.
I thought I transferred it.
Temporary agreement from FreeCom. I didn't get a copy.
The problem was, is so, Richard Mandell, who's the attorney for CRCA slash FreeCom, so he sent one, I thought it was 10 days ago or so. It might have been early last week. I looked over it, and he sent it to Clint and I both. And then I looked over it, and everything was fine except for it didn't have the, your names on there as signatures. So, I corrected it all and sent it back to him, said, so this is how it should be. But it was an editable, editable document. At that time, I said, so this is what the corrections finalized it, send it back to me, because we have a meeting on the, the 5th or the 6th, and I can get on that. And he never sent one back. He says that he did, he says that he sent one to Clint and I, but he did not.
Now, did you get anything? What was the difference to him?
Well, it's just the signature lines. That was the only difference. But, but I mean, I wanted it to be right, so then you sign it and we're done, instead of having to reroute it back to you, but. Essentially, so the agreement is, is as we've talked, the, that they will provide dispatch services to us, and then the cost that it will be to the county for those dispatch services, it's prorated through 2020, so that we can get through that. And then after December of next year, then we will pay at the same rate calculation as everybody else that participates in FreeCom. 2020 is, what we're paying is reflective of us buying into the voter, a voter position on the CRCA board.
So, it's for two FTEs and what else?
So, there's three full-time employees, actually.
But this is just a temporary agreement retroactive to October 1, when they took over the dispatch for us. And this is to tide us over until no later than June 1, 2020, when there'll be a final intergovernmental agreement presented. I'm kind of remembering that to be a voting member on the board, you buy into that, is that correct?
Basically, because all of the entities, there's five entities right now that are voting members on the CRCA, and that's what they, it's that combined regional communication authority. So, so they're, and they're the ones that basically fronted the money and collectively went to get the center up and running. So, in order to become a voting member, you have to kind of buy into some of that. And so, the biggest expense we had was just putting a new workstation down there in the, in the comm center for another position, you know, of dispatch. And that's already been done.
Quick question. It says two on this one. Is this an old one that we got sent today?
Evidently then, because it's not, it's not two, it's three.
It did say there will be a workstation provided for dispatch.
And that's already done.
So, is that salary, those salaries covered under what we were paying for before, right? And then with some left over that you moved some guys, you changed something as well?
Yeah, so there's no, so there's no additional monies coming out of my, my comm budget. In fact, there'll be some, some real savings when it, when all of this is set up. I mean, we're almost to that point now, you know, we've only got 25, 27 days left in the month.
And I clearly heard what you said. I thought it was two FTEs.
So, originally, originally, that was the discussion. However, they quickly, quickly realized that you can't, I mean, you can't provide 24-hour day dispatch with two full-time employees. You've got to have.
Three wild hour shifts, and then somebody gets sick, and then you're done.
And, and what had happened is in the original talks with the board chairman, Chief De Vecchio, we had thought the two would be enough, but then when they went to the whole board, and then after we've been up and running now for a couple of months, there, there, the board was like, look, you guys, you guys are busier than we anticipated, and so it has, there has to be a third person. And, and we're already using the, I mean, we were using three people anyways, so.
So, we just.
So, I agreed to that, because I mean, again, we want to pay our fair share. And, and we, and we are. We're still getting really good value from what we're paying.
At the end of November, we paid for two salaries.
We did.
End of December, if we sign this, we'll pay for three.
Yeah, and we'll back pay for the, the third one also. That's what, this is going to be retroactive to October 1.
And is that, I saw that, that's true. And is that money coming out of?
Out of the.
Comm's budget?
Yeah, out of the dispatch budget that I have. There, we'll still be under budget.
Okay, okay. You're okay. So, I have changed then from two to three. I changed on this document, there was just some wording. It said Custer County will compensate CRCA for the amount of these salaries, and I took that out and just put in, Custer, Custer will compensate CRCA for these salaries and benefits. Didn't have to be the amount of, it's whatever it is.
Bring it and put retroback.
It's already in here.
Isn't in there?
See, I don't have, I don't have the one that you're, so again, because I'm, I don't know which one you're looking at, because there were a couple, and the one that I sent back to.
Yeah, that's the one we were looking at, and that's the one I just edited to add all three signatures.
Yeah, see, that's the one that I.
Well, I just did it.
Modified that. That's the soft copy.
So, because of what you just said, that you added that in the commissioner line, I did it on this document.
So, this is what you're looking at.
Well, I don't know. I haven't seen that.
That's what he looked at, and he modified that.
I have not seen that.
Did you pull up the 8:22 time? That's what I pulled up.
Okay, I don't know until I look at it. I don't, I don't recognize the boxes on the box.
Here, here, just look at this real fast. Let's make sure that we're looking at the same one. This is.
That, that I pulled up off of the 8:22.
Okay, that's just a condensed version of that.
Condensed of that.
Because, there it is. I mean, it's a text box.
Yeah, that's exactly why it came out that way.
So, yes, I would say.
So, let me just make sure that it's all.
So, on number.
Is it 2A that you're changing from two to three FTE?
Oh, that is correct. Yes. Spelled out three and put three in parentheses, the numerical.
Yeah, so that should be three.
Okay. Prorated from October 1 through December 31. That's why you inserted the word temporary, correct, counsel? Because it was just until the end of the year?
It's temporary on that one.
Correct.
No.
It's my understanding this will stay in effect until we come up with a permanent IGA no later than June 1, 2020.
So, but.
No, I take it back, because this says through 20, December 31. My mistake.
Right, so we'll have to.
So, they're going to do another one or what?
Well, we can, we can amend this.
What do you want to do? What are you doing?
So, the parties agreed to work together to amend this present IGA by no later than June 1. We have to.
So, no, no, so, so let me just clarify, so. So, we're, this, this agreement will be in effect through December 31 of 2020. So, all of next year.
Okay, so we need to take that back. It's not what it says.
I know, but it, but it is. It is. We're going to pay the salary and benefits of three dispatchers through December 31 of 2020. This is not the one that I sent back to Mr. Mandell, so.
So, I made the change.
Those changes had to be made, so, so that's going to be in effect simply because we can't change mid-year what the budget looks like for CRCA, or for us, quite honestly, right? So, it was easier to calculate through December of next year what we're going to pay, and just keep that steady.
Work your new budget for 2021.
And that's correct. Now, what we're going to do with the IGA is, see, so, when, when CRCA first originated, they did the IGA for the five entities that were coming on. Their intent was that eventually they were going to have other entities outside of that, of that county, but they didn't set up the original IGA with any specific guidelines on how they would bring someone in, all the procedures to go through. So, they recognized that a new IGA needs to be put together to formally bring us on as a voting member on the CRCA. So, what that IGA that they're talking about will be done by no later than June 1, will establish those parameters, and we'll be able to help formulate this, because we're the first group that's coming on outside of their county, if that makes sense. And then, from January 1, 2021, moving forward, we'll, our rate will be calculated the same as everybody else.
And your budget will reflect the less.
Correct.
We want to leave June 1, 2020 in there?
Yes, sir.
And needs to change. In consideration of services provided to Custer, CRCA will receive the following.
Thank you.
Through, through 2020.
Yes.
For the remainder of 2019 and 2020, right?
That's what, yeah, that's where you could just say through 2020.
20, that's why I didn't have.
Yeah, that'd be cleaner.
So, we'll receive the following through.
December 2020.
I just put 2020.
Oh, yeah, that's even cleaner. That doesn't sound very lawyer-esque, Mr. Prince.
We're for him, we're, party, the first part agrees to.
Any other changes you were aware of, Sheriff Barley?
No, that should be it, I think.
Good, simple agreement.
It is simple, so.
Okay, well, so that we can get this moving, I'm going to go ahead, I'll move that we approve the agreement for the provision of dispatch services temporary through December 31, 2020, contract as presented.
Yes.
My second.
We're moving to second to approve the agreement for, for and between CRCA and Custer County. I have a question, counsel. Is this an intergovernmental agreement?
No, that's not a governmental entity.
Okay. They say they're an intergovernmental agency.
Well, I don't think it's set up as a separate taxing entity. It's not a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, so, and that's what intergovernmental agreements are for. I mean, they can call it an intergovernmental agreement, I guess, because ultimately it will be an agreement between Custer County and FAMAS. But for right now, we're just agreeing directly with CRCA.
I don't know who put this wording in here, it doesn't matter, but certainly they're very interested in knowing how we vote individually, but they only have a signature line for their chair. Are they going to vote on this document? Or does the chair just sign it in the?
Well, they already have voted on it as a board. CRCA is.
They accepted it with three FTEs.
Right.
This document.
This document, yeah.
As it was changed, the way you changed it.
So, communication with CRCA is.
Communication is in good with.
Challenging. We'll just leave it at that.
So, we sign this, it'll be like it is there, they'll go back and look, and if it doesn't agree with what they agreed to, we'll know about it, because they got to sign it.
Right, because they have to sign it still.
That's correct.
They refer to it as a resolution, and it's not a resolution. I mean, that's what they have here.
So, straighten that word up.
I didn't see resolution. I just saw agreement.
It says the resolution was declared to be duly adopted.
Down below.
Call vote to the board.
Maybe that was the resolution they agreed to.
Then I would, because we are going to sign that, I would change that to the agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that is.
There's no resolution to it. Thank you, counsel. I did not see that.
I'm going to guess you pilfered some of this from somewhere else and.
That's what lawyers do. We don't do anything original.
And it's not going to be a roll call vote, so we'll take that out. The vote of the board was as follows. And that's, that's screwed up too. That's not correct.
I would just take all of that out, and just have a place for you to sign.
I agree, because they have nay, absent, and abstain. They don't have a yea down there. So, we'll just take, take that out.
Nay, abstain, or absent.
We should have more of those spending issues. Nay, abstain, and.
Yeah.
Absent.
Let me see if I can delete this stuff.
I think I'll go back to billing by the hour. I'm going to be a millionaire here. I think your next contract goes to say anything past.
Or they wouldn't have a company. Shit, real quick, we'll figure out what you're wearing. Want some coffee, Jay?
No, I just had some. Thank you. I appreciate the offer.
All these damages are next.
Well, for some reason, I can't get that deleted.
Bring something totally different up all the sheriff's name here.
May.
National.
What is that over on that side?
There it is. Senate Bill 19-008, funding for sheriffs for substance abuse.
Grab a corner and squeeze it together.
I'm not abusing any substances yet. No, which, which one is it?
This is Senate Bill 19-008, and I took the gentleman's name and information down if we had any interest. Apparently, this organization, National Prevention of Opiates.
Yeah.
They, they have money to help sheriff departments and others fight substance abuse. I didn't have any interest in that. I wrote it down just in case you did.
So, I know it's, so that's the, call it MAT. It's requirements that the legislature is trying to unfund it mandates. That's what they're the best at. To force us to have to do a whole bunch of treatment for those that are addicted opiates, not only in our jail, but when, before they leave, we have, we'll be responsible that, that people continue treatment when they leave our jail.
How can you do that?
Well, that's a grand question, Bill. But that's not what they're concerned about. And so, I'm sure that he's talked, that's grant monies to help with programs like that. I mean, maybe they can pay for a treatment center to actually come to Custer County that we would then be able to use.
Well, they have a mobile opiate van. Very interesting. And they listed all the rural counties they went to. And they listed all the rural counties they went to. Custer's not listed. I asked him why. He says, I guess we forgot. I said, and therein lies the problem.
But you want some money.
Yeah, maybe if you could send me over that information, if you don't mind.
Did you make the motion, sir?
Yes.
My second.
But you can make it if you want.
No, I don't want my name on this mess.
And when the lowest dude starts flying, I don't want my name on any of those stars around.
And I don't know. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Owen, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hosnay, carry. Okay, I'm gonna send this to the printer if you don't mind.
We're waiting on that. Since I have me on the, or have this issue on the agenda twice, I'm gonna go ahead with one of the, it'll take, literally take two minutes.
Yeah.
So I just need a signature from the board accepting the black and gray marijuana grant that we just received again, fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-six cents. We received a seventeen thousand dollar grant back in September and wasn't notified of it. They deposited into the, or they sent a check to the treasurer. The treasurer deposited, never told us. We had no clue, so we've got about, with the acceptance of this grant, we'll have about thirty-one thousand dollars roughly.
When is it effective?
So this has been awarded, so once we send this back to them, they'll cut us a check.
Before the end of the year?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we got notice yesterday.
Fourteen thousand four sixty-four forty-six.
So was that in, were you projecting that?
I'll make a copy for you.
Be something we'd expect, Shannon, when you built the budget?
No.
So this is an addition?
Right, so this black and gray marijuana, so basically this is marijuana money from tax dollars collected in the state. We don't even apply for this now. We applied the first two times.
Like an oil dividend in Alaska.
Almost, almost. So now they just, like, we get this letter that says, congratulations, you received another grant in the amount of this, these dollars, so.
We did apply for this one, correct? Did we send in an app for this? I thought we did.
No, not anymore.
I thought this was the last.
They don't, they just, they'll send a, they'll send us a document that says, you're eligible for this grant, and do you want it, you know? And we say, sure.
What fool would say no?
And then they say, well, here you go. So.
Restricted funds.
Right, they are restricted to marijuana enforcement investigations, but.
Now, you said that. They were talking about the same organization, talking about the opiate lawsuits.
You probably need to put some magic on this, don't you?
If not, they're part of it.
But do you care?
And he said there were two counties in the state that hopped out and receiving opiate money. Unfortunately, we're not one of them. I thought that was very interesting. Why would anybody hop down?
Probably because of some of the strings that come with it.
Care.
No, I was wondering if it needed to be.
I could, probably.
Do we need to file this with you?
So those funds, Shannon, go to, probably help with, like, uniforms and stuff that is damaged during marijuana.
Well, yeah, if something was damaged during a raid or an investigation or something, yes. And then also for just equipment, the largest department we've spent so far was on that Conex project we did there for storing all of the, so that we could clear up the rest of our evidence locker and keep all that drugs and all that smell outside in the Conex and not in the building, so.
So we got a mistake there, sir?
Okay.
Last line, first paragraph was October, so I changed it to the fifth day of December.
Okay.
I'm gonna reprint that. I asked Kelly if we needed a signature line for her. Do you think we do? I haven't sent it yet, Kara. She said she didn't really care one way or the other.
All I do, I mean, all I signed it for is a testing your signature, so.
I'll put it on there.
Hold on just a second, ma'am.
Put a seal on it, too.
So we'll call that, uh.
I hate to break it to you, but you're not gonna make it.
I have a doctor's appointment tomorrow.
I'm gonna work on my own funeral at this point.
Evil.
I didn't know you could make a meeting.
Well, you sit here and witnessed a bunch of it.
Well, that's his point.
You know now, don't you?
Well, we can spur them on.
So. Oh, crap, that wasn't the right paper. We gotta go back and do those resolutions again. She's bringing it. We'll re-sign it.
Okay.
Had the wrong date on it.
Okay, let's jump the gun here a little bit.
Well, we are.
So I want a move, we accept replacing all those light bulbs.
Well, it's already been done.
Is that even on?
I know, it's like.
So.
Let's consider replacing broken bulbs.
The agenda for the BOCC will change light bulbs.
Who's paying for?
Makes it look a little silly.
Dark skies is.
I'm gonna take this with you.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you, brother. Thanks for coming.
Thanks. Good to see you.
Yeah, the light bulbs have been, we've turned that over to Huff. There's some frustration. I told you last time I'd follow up on it.
Yep.
I've been out of town. I will follow up on it. He was gonna order them and install them.
I did, so.
So that's all we need to know for that.
That's fine. It's probably considered a bribe. Quit real glowing. We're gonna pay for this and then come back with all kinds of trouble.
So the next item of business is consideration of a letter to the West Custer County Hospital District Board of Directors.
Why are we doing?
I believe we have that. If we need to, we can take three or four hour recess, and then you can go do all your stuff, and then we can come back. Apparently not.
Let's get it done.
Anybody, yeah.
No, I'm fine. Count me as a four. That's all I have.
I don't have that letter.
You know, I'm not sure I do either. Not with hospital, library board. Oh, no, hospital.
Hospital board, I have it. Well.
I do not.
I had it on my, in my sent file, and I pulled it out.
So when did it get sent?
Hasn't been sent yet. The email was sent out to you last Saturday, I think is when I sent it.
Friday or Saturday. So we looking for that hospital letter now?
No.
Because Tom had a couple of changes, and Jay had some changes.
Did it come from you?
Uh, yeah, originally, and then.
So who, so what's the latest and greatest?
I, because then Tom sent out his changes, and Jay pitched on it his changes, and I didn't bring that with me.
You got the most revised.
Pardon?
Who has the one with all the changes?
I do.
Let me have that.
I don't think I ever sent it to you. I just sent it to them for their review and changes, and I've got it on my laptop. I don't have room to bring my real laptop.
Email it to you?
Yeah, it's fine. I saved it, but I'm not sure I got it saved as the correct document. That's the problem.
Email him that to me as well.
I do that once in a while, and you gotta figure out what it is.
Um, I've got one dated blank 2019. That's the one you're doing, correct?
He took that one, and you modified it, didn't you, Jay?
Yeah, I had it just, there was a, there was one grammatical error, and I, Don Canada may, I went back to by majority vote instead of the BOCC. That's just because I felt I wanted to do it.
Or an lawyer, Ken.
Well, I've got the one you're sending, I believe, sir. I'm looking at it.
With his change.
I don't know if it has his changes on it or not.
Don Cana, Kara.
All right, I'll be looking for it.
I sent out my original letter, or thing, either last Friday or Saturday, or the first day. I'm gonna have Tom. My still says, when it comes to you, it's gonna say Meredith. I apologize for that.
It's fine.
He sent it with your changes, Tom, and his vote. Should be up to date.
Can you put my name on there, too, so I can?
I would be happy to.
When'd you send it out originally?
It's on its way.
Just out of curiosity.
Oh, looks like, let's see.
He's got one on Saturday.
That would have been on 11/29.
So that's Saturday? Yeah, it would be. So he sent us back your changes, and then Jay's made a change on it, so we'll get the.
Yeah, when you see in red, not all these are my changes. Tom added an executive session to obtain legal advice. I took out the word aware of, just to be aware, and then I added by majority vote at the November 13 meeting. It was agreed that.
Okay, you already sent it now?
I sent it.
Yes, I just got it.
So do you want to make these corrections? Get it in a final format?
I would say with these corrections, I'm ready to vote that we send it. It's time. They got a response from us. We've been doodling around with this for quite a while.
I move we accept the letter you just sent with the corrections in it and correct it and send it. Because it.
I'll go ahead and send it to continue to.
So let's discuss it now, and we can get it out.
That's fine.
We're moving seconded to.
And I sent a response to Jay, and that paragraph that it says, as it turns out the BOCC's delay, Jay eliminated the word of.
Right.
Of needs to be there, but we can rephrase it. Of which he was previously not aware. I had he was previously not aware of.
So did you send it to Clint, too, Jay?
So can we just take a timeout a second here, please?
Sorry.
That's all right. Number one, I can't edit your letter for some reason, so I'm out. I'm gonna make some corrections to it. You have the original. I would ask that you do that. Somebody needs to.
Well, I know, I saw you. He just sent us the corrected one on.
We can't send that letter to the board.
No, no, we're not, but we can look at the corrections, make sure all that's correct, all I'm after right now.
Excepting what I'm proposing.
Okay.
Commissioner Prince handled it.
Right this head.
Because I cannot do it on his form.
That he was not previously aware.
You would indicate where you're at, gentlemen.
Let me put that.
Could you give us a page or a reference or a paragraph? I have no idea what you're talking about.
It's the paragraph that starts out, as it turns out the BOCC's delay.
To the word provision on the fourth line.
Of which he was previously not aware.
So you're deleting the word of?
No, I had, he was previously not aware of. Jay deleted of. I sent back to all of you. I thought that of should be in there, but if he doesn't want to end it with a preposition, then move it forward, of which he was previously not aware. Otherwise, just as a statutory provision, he was previously not aware.
Right.
What line is that?
Fourth line. I don't know how, second paragraph.
Second paragraph, fourth line.
One, two, it's actually third paragraph.
Third paragraph. Okay, yeah, there it is.
First paragraph, second page, sorry.
As it turns out the BOCC's delay in sending you a formal offer or counter offer regarding the committee's recommendation has proven to be fortuitous to both sides.
Yeah, and then the next sentence, during the course of his ongoing research, he stumbled across a statutory provision, he, of which he was previously not aware.
So of which he.
Put a comma after that, research. It's a prepositional phrase, during, yes, it is.
No, yeah.
I disagree.
That's what I learned.
Okay, so let me just read that sentence. During the course of his ongoing research, our county attorney, quote, stumbled across, unquote, his characterization, a statutory provision of which he was not previously aware.
Previously.
Of which he was previously not aware.
Yeah, I would do it that way.
Correct.
He was previously not aware.
I know, I'm just asking. That's an ask. I'm not telling you I'm asking.
Of which he was previously not aware.
Which he was previously. Not aware. Okay, that's what I have now.
Yeah, I don't know why I can't.
And do you have the one with Thompson red, where he has?
Yes.
In an executive session to obtain legal advice and.
Correct.
You think they're red, then?
Yeah, as soon as I accept all the changes, it'll be black.
And I think there was also, what a word I left out. Oh, yeah, there it is.
Of on the next page.
Pursue of our mutual goal.
Second line.
Where's that?
Second line, like, next page, sorry.
Still part of the same paragraph.
Okay, I see it now, okay.
No, uh, the second line from the top on page two. Doesn't matter what paragraph it's in, because the paragraphs split.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I'd like to go back to paragraph one. After directors and those representing the BOCC period, I'd like to know what you have.
By majority vote, is that what you're doing?
Mm-hmm.
By majority vote at the November 13 meeting. It was agreed to accept the majority portion of the proposal.
Are you there, sir?
I'm at 10, no, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, scroll up, you see, I'm right there. Whoop, down, a little more yet.
Oh, like that?
Nope. Other direction. I want this paragraph.
Okay. Representing the BOCC, where is that?
It's November 13th, Commissioner Prince advised the BOCC of the proposed temporary plan that had been negotiated by those representing your board of directors and those representing the BOCC.
So this is what I'm interested, starting right there.
Majority vote?
Yes, at the November 13th meeting, is that correct? Is that what you have?
Excuse me, I haven't seen here. It was agreed to accept majority portion of the proposal.
A major portion?
I'm sorry, correct. It says major portion.
Okay, all right. And then with these payments commencing January 1, then what, sir, do you have?
I have a period after January 1.
Correct.
And the majority of the BOCC disagreed with the suggestion that we pay you $4,000 for the remainder of the current fiscal year for the reason that we already have a temporary agreement in place that does not expire until January 20.
And then the next paragraph, first sentence, the letter prepared by Mr. Smith was just that. I have the word proposed in italic, is that correct?
That is correct. That's how I prepared it to emphasize. It was only proposed at that point. And that was because they went and voted on what was, we hadn't actually finished or finalized, so I made it very clear it was.
Okay. Okay, so we had a motion, correct? As it was, to accept this letter as it was.
Yeah, I can, and I'll.
But we have a motion on the table.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's just vote.
So I'm gonna delete this, because this is ridiculous. And we'll operate off of that. How's that?
Fine. I'm gonna email it to whoever wants it.
Throw the discussion. Through the discussion?
They're assuming that's food.
I want a favor, say aye. Aye.
What are we voting on, are we voting on revised one?
Accept this letter as revised.
As revised?
Yes. Motion carries, two in favor, one no vote. Okay, so now will you send that?
Okay, now I will send this again to...
Thank you.
Everybody. You, 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 okay, let me try that again. Okay, proposed.
And I'm also gonna delete this.
To you, and I'm sorry I do that, I just don't know how to change it. See, because if I put Meredith in there, then it goes to her, but I don't know how to make a change for Meredith.
Okay, can you scroll over Meredith's name right there?
See, it's got the right places going.
Right, okay.
But I don't know how to make it...
Gotcha. Yeah, we gotta go back to your two, now you try that, carry on.
I can change your address, boo.
I've tried that before, yeah.
When you get out of all this, you go back to the two on your new email.
I should be able to correct it.
Two, Meredith, whoops, Clint. Tom, B, Tom. Kelly, you want to copy this too?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll move on. Commissioner Canada, are you gonna be in a meeting or do you want to do a no vote? Are you still in session?
Okay, I have Karen, Clint, Bill, Tom, and Kelly, anybody else?
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll get right back to you.
Okay, transfer of ESF.
Okay, see you in a day. Cousin Bob had a heart attack.
Oh boy.
I'm getting double whammies here.
Well, you can always request a recess, sir, okay?
Alright, so, uh, what are we voting on then?
We're done, we're not, we're moving on.
Good.
Yeah.
Hey. This is a transfer of $30,000 from the general fund to the emergency services fund. And it's just a bookkeeping transfer.
Uh, I had this question asked to me when somebody must have looked at the agenda. Um, and thank you for being here, because I couldn't answer it. So I get that it's a bookkeeping thing, uh, did we not have enough money in that fund, or did they overspend the fund?
Initially, when we did the budget, we had to put a $30,000 transfer from the general fund to balance emergency service.
Okay.
And we just never transferred all the way to this time, hoping against hope we would not need it.
Got it, I remember that.
So this is to follow up with that? Anticipated transfer.
So it's gonna take a motion then?
They, yes, absolutely, yeah, they did not overspend by $30,000, that was the question, somebody asked me.
So we're just correcting the books that we agreed on the budget with earlier. And so I move that we accept, or tran, transfer $30,000 from the general fund to the emergency services fund to correct the bookkeeping that we set up initially.
I'll second.
We're moving seconded to transfer $30,000 uh, from general fund to the emergency services fund, is the wording to correct the bookkeeping?
It is just to finalize.
Just finalize, alright.
In order to finalize.
Because it wasn't a mistake, that's why we shouldn't say correct.
And it would have just been more ideal if we hadn't had you.
It was to, it was to...
We were hoping we wouldn't have to do this, right?
It was to finalize, that's right, to finalize the, uh...
You're right with that word, correct, because correct means we made a mistake somewhere, it wasn't a mistake. You're right with that, sir, as a second. So any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, actually, sorry, any public comment? Can you believe it? Yeah, I know, I, I... All in favor, say aye.
To finalize.
To finalize the bookkeeping for 2019.
Complete?
Right, finalize the bookkeeping for 2019. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, carries. Next item of business, consideration of the fire extinguishers in Wetmore Community Building. I received a phone call from Ruth Roper while I was at the conference and the fire extinguisher people contacted her and said, "We better come do these fire extinguishers." And guess what, the fire extinguishers never got replaced in the building after the remodel. There are no fire extinguishers down there.
There's none in there?
That's what Ruth Roper told me. And I said, well, she said, "Do you need a vote from the board to tell him to move forward?" I said, "I will bring it up to the board, but we don't have much choice, we have to..."
We have to do it, how many are there?
Don't know. So he, she was gonna reach out to him and find that out. How many we needed, uh, and what happened to the other ones, and so on and so forth. So I just put it on here that I think we should have a motion to provide fire extinguishers in the Wetmore Community Building.
And before we do that, what would the fund be, maybe we can make it all happen, so we don't have to go back, right?
The funds.
Yeah, the fund would come from the building. Plans, we've got enough in it.
Well, I'll go ahead, I'll move that we, um, authorize the, um, installation of fire extinguishers in the Wetmore Community Building based upon recommendations that Ruth Roper makes to us, since she is a fire professional.
You'd authorize, it would be the purchase and installation, right? Because we got to buy them.
Yeah, typically if you buy them, they install them, but yeah. Purchase and installation, say a second?
Second.
We're moving seconded to purchase and install fire extinguishers, uh, based on Ruth Roper's recommendation and work with the fire extinguisher company. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay, motion carries.
Seems like somebody ought to look for the ones that they did have in there.
Yeah, I, we had that conversation, she said she was gonna try to track them down, so... Um, further items, gentlemen, that you're aware of? I hope not, because we didn't amend the agenda anymore.
We're done.
Public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Could I just do a follow-up on the questions that you asked of me earlier?
Yes, you may, yes, 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 you can certainly come forward if you would like.
It's real quick, I talked to Sam Donato.
Hmm?
Um, he said he would not be able to speak to that.
Oh.
Whether you can, you cannot, he said that would be a legal question.
Okay.
Um, and he said, uh, for the clinic, their books are conceptually the same as ours, they're just departments and not funds. So it can be fragmented out and they could show you what it is.
But it's not currently, I'm assuming.
And I, I couldn't speak to it.
I can't either, I have a...
But it, but it could be, he said absolutely.
It'd just be a way they did show it to themselves.
Because it is restricted, and he said, um, he said as far as the legal authority to redirect those monies, he said he could not speak to that as well, but suggested that maybe Clint reach out to John Naylor, who used to contract with, uh, with a firm in Denver who used to write our ballot questions. And he said they are really good at that type of thing, but he said he does not remember who John Naylor used to use for that.
Is it a law firm that John worked with?
It was, that it was a law firm, but like our road and bridge, that they could do it just right and have it take place, you know, back to the 1-1, start immediately, and all those questions that come into play, that that, that that was his suggestion, and they could tell us anything we need to know about with the how, because they know how to will letters and that work.
Okay.
That's what. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate you following up with that.
Thanks, John.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I would have put it on there.
Alright, kiddo, I'm gonna send you this...
I sent it to her.
Oh, so we need to put the date in and then we need to scroll down to make room for letterhead. December 5th instead of December blank.
Yes.
Um, so... We want to send this obviously on letterhead. I would assume that will go out today.
Yeah, sooner the better.
Tell you what, I'll drop it off at the clinic. I mean, yeah, if you want, on my way out here, if you want.
Uh, I'd prefer to mail it to Mr. Tobin. And here's why, what happened the last time?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Some lady said, "Oh, I'll give that to him."
Never gotten there.
It may or may not have, we don't even really know that, to this day.
You want to copy it then?
This is going to Mr., to Mr. Tobin and no one else, so I suggest we mail it. And he can carry it, yeah, and then he can carry it to us for it.
It's gonna go to me three days. Huh? If we're lucky, yeah.
And that was the intent when we were putting it on letterhead and addressing it to him, really, right? I mean, if we wanted to hand deliver it to him, I guess that would be different, but I don't think he lives in the county, does he?
I don't know that much.
No, he doesn't, I don't think.
I don't know, not sure. For some reason, I thought, that one time he told me about the weather when he was driving in from down below. Um, I'm just following up, is that the intent of the commissioners to sign this and mail it? That's really what I'm asking.
Yes.
Yes. Was that not?
No. No, we were just adopting the letter as revised.
I think we need to send a letter, I think it's well overdue.
I agree, so can we print that off and...
And, uh, send it to the Tribune.
And then we'll see what...
Yeah, I was gonna say, then we'll see what the Tribune has to say.
Well, once it's, once it's signed, it's a public record and, you know, and you're gonna send it out, so...
If you want to send it to Tribune, go ahead, I'm not.
No.
Well, I'm assuming somebody is gonna listen to this or is streaming it and watching, so they can come and get it if they want to.
Hey, sure. I move we adjourn.
I have one other thing, just real quick, I got the title insurance commitment while we were sitting here for the, the property for Colorford and Colorado College, everything looks good. No, yeah, no means earning, it'd be taken care of, so... I'll send this to all of you, uh, but I'll take it from here and then contact Colorado College. We have to send some paperwork up there for them to sign and I assume maybe I'll just do a wire transfer for the purchase price.
Okay.
But things are moving along there.
With respect, Commissioner Canada, we didn't get a second to your motion, but I would like to have a little quick discussion following up on it.
That's okay.
Attorney Smith. So, I've thought about this through this conference, we set through attainable, or, uh, short-term rental. We are now going to own this property.
County will, yes.
County will own this property. I think we need to think about deed restrictions or whatever we're going to do, I, I can tell you I am not in favor of just turning, turning it around and selling this to the first developer that comes along.
Absolutely not.
So I would ask that we give some thought to what's that gonna look like? Um, do we need to give the Affordable Housing Board the authority to have a an account to receive and expend money? I'll tell you why I'm asking you that. I reached out yesterday to an individual seeking $200,000 to fund this affordable housing initiative. I don't know what we do with that money today if we got it. Except stick it in the general fund and try to put a...
Need earmark.
Put it in a...
You can earmark.
A line item, so, just food for thought is all I wanted to throw out.
Can I suggest, because I like where your mind's going on this, um, that we ask the Affordable Housing Group to come up with a proposal to us on the deed restrictions, on how that property could be used and resold. So often someone gets into an affordable housing, they buy it under market value, there's no restrictions, they go ahead and sell and make a huge profit. It's a game that's played, so there has to be a deed restriction. And I think we could ask the Affordable Housing Committee to come to us and say, "Here's what we recommend to you."
We have to approve it, the sale.
And the conditions of the sale, that's what I'm more interested in.
Yes, yes, nobody can buy it until
Right.
they understand what they're...
And agree to the...
But it needs to be in the deed, because the first guy who signs the agreement, it doesn't go to the next person who buys it, but if it's in the deed, it does.
That's right.
That runs with the land.
And it would expire at some point, I mean, whoever or not.
Because if we don't have it, it's gonna go back to the open market eventually. Or somebody's gonna get greedy and want to make money on it.
And so it's, and the first person, they do that, that's what they do.
So, yeah, that's, that was what I was wanting to throw out.
But see, that's gonna take a lot of careful thought, because in fact, if I were a kid wanting to buy a house and I got an affordable house, that's, that's the intent, it's not for what we, what we call it, the other kind of housing that's
Attainable?
Understandable and affordable.
More like station aid housing or...
Yeah, whatever it is, anyway, uh...
Workforce housing.
Yeah, at some point, it's gonna be their home and, and they, after a certain length of time, deserve the right to, uh, to use the equity and we're gonna have to figure out what that means.
Right.
And any improvements that they do?
Yeah. Yeah, we can't...
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be their land.
It's gonna be their place.
No question about it, but this whole deed restriction thing, they're gonna have to agree to that when they buy the property, so... Anyway, uh, I've got some other thoughts, but I'm not gonna belabor...
Prolong the meeting, is that what you mean?
The whole thing now, so, um, I would have to...
Because it was printed, the letterhead's printed on a different color. I was asking Kelly, where it comes from Creston Graphics, we need to get the soft copy of the header.
This was old, it's new. Why can't spend the money getting all the same color here on me? Thank you, ma'am.
That's gotta be in their computers.
Have this mailed out today?
I hope the envelopes are that same color.
Yes.
Oh my gosh. If they open that, it shouldn't be long.
Anything else, gentlemen? Mr. Canada, anything you want to say? Yes, there is.
Motion.
Motion.
Oh, I move we adjourn, I thought somebody was gonna second it.
I'll second it, we're moving seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
I gotta go chase them.
Pose nay. Uh, unless you want it.